Are we ready to go? Ready to go? All right. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to this continued meeting of the Board of Trustees. We're going to be continuing with our open session agenda. The board has no reportable actions from the closed session, closed session yesterday. We will be continuing with closed session after we finish our open session agenda today. With that, Sarah, would you take the role, please?
We might want to wait just a moment. The remote attendees are just beginning to populate into the Zoom call and we're going to need to promote a number of our trustees.
Yeah.
I I think we have everybody pulled out of the attendee pool and promoted.
All right. So I understand I started talking before everyone was online and so I'll welcome you again to this continuation of the Board of Trustees meeting. We'll be conducting our open session, followed by further closed session. The board has no reportable actions from yesterday's closed session. And now I think Sarah, we're ready to take the role.
Broughton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Sis Nettos. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Dylan.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Connaught. Here. Protula. Shelby.
Present.
Stowe. Stallings.
Here.
Tony.
Present.
Carrie, you have a call.
Thank you. Let's first call for a public comment. If you're on Zoom and you would like to address the board about one of the matters on the open session agenda today, please use the raise hand function to bring yourselves to our attention. I will let you know if we have anyone who's interested in speaking.
We do have a hand raised. We're going to be giving three minutes.
Three minutes, please.
All right. I see Zach Newman. Your microphone has been made available to you and you have three minutes to provide your public comment. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zach Newman. I'm a senior attorney at the Legal Aid Association of California. I'll be commenting on two items. First, regarding item 54-113, annual appointment of officers on the consent agenda. We believe that all four candidates are extremely competent and have a deep understanding of the work. Sorry, of the importance of the commission's work and we support their appointment. Second, we are in strong support of item 704, approval of the IOTA grant distribution. We applaud the efforts of State Bar staff who have protected against the worst of their original projections by working closely with banks to ensure higher yields on IOTA accounts. What this means is that the bar is far more in reserves than originally anticipated at the beginning of the COVID crisis. Now, staff is recommending a moderate distribution of 35 and a half million, which we strongly support. We believe it is possible that there may be higher IOTA income than expected as we recover from the pandemic. Office of Access and Inclusion staff has historically been careful with projections, which has been protective of ensuring consistency in funding for programs. Finally, with the anticipated passage of SB 498, which expands eligibility for free legal services, we anticipate that the pool of eligible clients will actually increase in 2022. In sum, a moderate increase in IOTA funds, as recommended by staff, will allow organizations to respond to the anticipated increase need. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else?
I'm not seeing anyone, though.
Okay, thank you. So that will conclude public comment. The next item is minutes. We have two sets of minutes for approval. I will propose to have a roll call on both of them at the same time unless anyone has any matter to raise about them. Hearing none. Sarah, would you take the role on approving the minutes, please?
Broughton.
Yes.
Sis Nettos.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Connaught.
Yes.
Protula. Shelby.
Hi.
Stowe.
Hi, and I apologize for being a little bit tardy.
Oh. Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
I'm sorry. Could I ask you to call Highland Chen again? It looked like she was attempting to.
I didn't hear my name be called, so I'm a yes.
Thank you. Okay, the minutes are adopted.
All right.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the chair's report. I'll begin first with the action item listed under the chair's report, which is approval of revised committee assignments, reflecting Leah's role as our new executive director and Melanie Shelby's interest in joining the audit committee. So I'd welcome a motion or any discussion the trustees might have about that item.
I'm moving this chair.
Thank you.
Dylan, second.
Okay, motion by Ruben, second by Juan. If they're seeing no discussion, let's take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sis Nettos.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Connaught. Yes. Protula. Shelby.
Hi.
Stowe.
Yes.
Stallings. Tony.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right. And Melanie, thank you for adding the audit committee to your portfolio. We appreciate your service on that committee. So I have a few remarks this morning in my chair's report. First of all, as we all can see, we're back to in-person meetings and I'm very glad to see that most board members have been able to attend in person and especially to welcome some of our new board members. As you all know, we've had four new board members join us during the virtual world of meetings during the pandemic. So I'm very glad to welcome Mark Tony and Christine Genon today here in person. Did this yesterday also, but I want to do it formally today. And I'm looking forward to soon meeting Melanie Shelby and Arnie Sewell, our other two board member colleagues. I will note that when we set this meeting, the COVID situation was looking a little better than it does at the moment. And so, as I mentioned yesterday, for safety and to comply with the LA County mandate, we're all wearing masks at the meeting today. And we are not yet able to welcome back the public in person, but we look forward to doing that hopefully in the near future. In the meantime, public comment at and observation of our meetings will remain available by video and/or phone. Next, I want to welcome back Leah Wilson. This is Leah's first meeting since her return as executive director. We are absolutely delighted to have her back. And as you all know, she brings extensive experience and knowledge of the State Bar along with an ethos of change, innovation, and integrity that will benefit the organization as we continue to modernize and reform it. So welcome. Now, let me talk about Donna Hirstwitz, who, as you know, has served admirably for 18 months as our interim executive director, while also carrying out many of the responsibilities of her former role as chief of programs, to which she has now returned. I have to say, I have really enjoyed working closely with you, Donna, this year. You've brought good humor and equanimity to the challenges that we faced together as chair and interim executive director, along with Ruben as vice chair. So no matter how hard the topic, it was always a pleasure to work together. Donna took on the daunting role of interim ED to serve the organization and the public, not because she saw it, but for service. And to paraphrase Shakespeare's Twelfth Night, "Some are born leaders, some achieve leadership, and some have leadership thrust upon them." Well, that's Donna. She stepped up and did a great job in an unusual situation. We all owe Donna a debt of gratitude for her hard work, commitment to the State Bar, and likely her incredibly detailed knowledge of this very complex organization. So let's have a round of applause for. And great. Two more things I want to talk to you about this morning. The next one being the search for a new chief trial counsel. Your chief trial counsel search committee, which is composed of Brandon as chair, Arnie, myself, and co-af vice chair Ryan Harrison, recent, very recently met to consider additional candidates for the CTC position. We have set a schedule for committee interviews and will be pulling the board for a special meeting at the end of August, at which we intend to present candidates to you for interviews and to potentially make a decision. In the meantime, our recruiter is still actively conducting outreach. The application period is still open, so we may have some yet additional candidates, but we are moving the process along as expeditiously as we can. Finally, want to address the status of our building in San Francisco at 180 Howard Street. In 2019, if I'm correct, the state auditor approved funding for eight out of 11 State Bar identified capital projects at a funding level of $8.1 million, less than the $8.7 million the State Bar had estimated was necessary to complete those projects. As you will see in the item today relating to refinancing the Howard Street building loan, these same 11 projects are now estimated to total over $13.5 million. So the long and the short of it is we have a financial issue with continuing to own and operate the Howard Street building and we need to do some more examination of the finances of that operation because neither the funding approved by the fee bill or the loan you are being asked to approve today will address the projects not approved by the state auditor or additional capital improvement needs that have been identified subsequent to the prior fee increase analysis. And there is no viable funding source where the warmshell and tenant improvements needed to lease the vacant space in the building. So in response to these challenges, in late 2019, the finance committee was assigned to undertake a comprehensive review of the feasibility of the State Bar maintaining the Howard Street building. That work was initiated, but was paused due to the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Today, I am reassigning this analysis to the committee because this analysis will impact not just the State Bar's budget, but also the organization's return-to-office plan in the post-pandemic environment. Post-pandemic, we anticipate that less office space may be needed and time is of the essence to assess how to handle the building, how to and how to reconfigure working patterns for staff to maximize and minimize our use of expensive office space. As such, I'm asking staff to work with the finance committee chair, Jose, to develop a work plan that will result in a report and recommendation for the full board to consider, ideally at our next regularly scheduled meeting in September. So Jose, thank you in advance. Always great to be volunteered, I know. All right, that concludes my chair's report. And let's move now to the executive director's report.
All right. And I'm not going to make long remarks today, but I did want to thank the board again for giving me the opportunity to lead the organization for a second time. As you know, many of you know, I have spent the last two weeks that I've been on the job trying to get up to speed on where we are. While I have, of course, a great deal of background on the organization, a lot has happened in the last year and a half. I think that's an understatement. And I am working diligently to get up to speed as quickly as possible. I will note the obvious, that we are facing significant challenges as an organization. The public's trust in our institution has been shaken, as has that of our key legislative partners. And this is a situation that ultimately is not sustainable for the bar. I am confident, though, that working together, a board that is appropriately focused on setting the vision and policy direction for this organization, and a capable and competent leadership team, that we can rise to meet these challenges. You are also going to hear me begin to talk quite a bit about our staff and the need to foster and encourage innovative and engaged staff because we can set all of the strategic policy and we can do all of the visioning that we want to need to do. But ultimately, it is our staff that have to execute on the mission of the organization. And I fear that without appropriate investment in and attention to the staff that are the life force of the bar, we are not going to be able to successfully turn the corner on these challenges that we face. So as I said, and don't intend to make long remarks today, I do plan to come back to you in September, once I've completed kind of my initial 100 or 60-day assessment with some more concrete ideas about what the priorities, near and longer-term priorities for our organization should be. As we begin to work collectively to plan for our January planning session, January of 2022, the board will need to adopt a new five-year strategic plan for the State Bar. So I expect that we will begin talking about that in September and I will certainly be prepared to share some preliminary ideas with you in September. So with that, I will turn it back over to Sean and we can go through the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Leah. Let's turn next to our consent agenda. Before we vote on the agenda as a whole, I'm going to pull three items. Item 54111, Regarding the Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation, and item 54114, California Board of Legal Specialization. That's for the purpose of allowing certain board members to record their recusal. And then I'm also pulling item 54-141, which is approval of first quarter financial statements. And that's because interest was expressed in having an actual report to the board in a summary. And so whilst Tang has put together a presentation, Josh Protula is running a little bit late today, won't join us until around 11:00 or so, and I know he's interested in that and requested that we give a more complete, an oral report to the board. So I'm going to pull that and we'll take it later out of order when Josh is able to join us. So with that, unless there is discussion about the remaining consent agenda items, I'll ask Sarah to pull the board for approval of the remaining consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Thank you.
Broughton. Sorry.
Broughton. Sorry, yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sis Nettos.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Connaught. Yes. Protula. Shelby.
Hi.
Stowe. Stowe.
Hi.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, consent agenda is moved with the exception of those three items.
Thank you. Let's take up next item 54111, annual appointment of members, alternates, and officers to the Commission on Judicial Nominees Evaluation. This was approved by the executive committee yesterday and recommended to you. Unless there's any discussion, I guess I need, I would invite a motion on this item.
So moved. Jose.
Second, Shelby.
Thank you. Motion by Jose, second by Melanie. No discussion. Sarah, please take the role.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen. I'm recused from decision on this one because of relationship they have with members of this slate.
Sis Nettos.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Connaught.
Yes.
Protula. Shelby.
Hi.
Shelby.
Hi.
Stowe.
Hi.
Stallings.
I am recusing myself.
Tony. Motion carries on the Jenny appointments item.
Thank you. Although I was not called upon to vote, please note that I was recused.
Noted.
Thank you. The next item, 54-114, annual appointment of members and officers to the California Board of Legal Specialization. Just like the prior item, this matter was considered by the executive committee yesterday and approved for recommendation for approval by the board. Unless there's any discussion on this item, I would invite a motion.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Motion by Juan, second by Brandon. Hearing no discussion. Sarah, please take the role.
Broughton.
Recused.
Chen.
Yes.
Sis Nettos.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Hi.
Connaught. Yes. Protula. Shelby.
Hi.
Stowe.
Hi.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Motion on the legal spec board carries.
Thank you. Next is reports of board committees. I'm going to pass board executive committee for the moment. Brandon, can you report on regulation and discipline committee?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So at yesterday's regulation and discipline committee meeting, the committee approved the amendment to rule 9.23, which allows State Bar to collect on judgments. And this ultimately goes to the CSF, issue that we're going to be talking about a little later. We cert, we approved a circulation for public comment regarding rule 2201 procedures, which really clarifies Ratt's oversight rule of the 2201 program and provides clearer lines of authority in that important work. We discussed proposing, or we discussed the increase in the compensation for special deputy trial counsel. And I think the will of the committee is that this go forward with a little extra study into the budget impact and a careful consideration of that. So we had a productive day yesterday that was topped off with review of metrics. And then we'll be discussing those metrics and any further refinements later on in the Board of Trustees agenda. So Ratt has been busy, vice chair, Ms. Chen and myself, continue to be regularly with OCTC, OTC, State Bar Court, and our stakeholders in those areas to continue to improve our discipline process.
Thank you, Brandon. Let me return to board executive committee report. So yesterday, we, at the executive committee, we principally approved a number of slates of candidates for officers and membership in various State Bar sub-entities, which were either on your consent agenda or pulled from the consent agenda today, and the board has already approved those. We also approved an item which should be on the consent agenda today, right, in order to approve about per diems, about expanding per diems to certain public members of State Bar sub-entities. And that's, takes care of the executive committee report, so I'll move on to a report from Jose as chair of the finance committee.
Thank you, Chair. The finance committee met on July 1st, 2021, and today the finance committee recommends to the full board item 143, which is the approval of, one, refinancing of the 2016 Bank of America loan related to the 180 Howard Street in San Francisco, two, financing of additional capital improvement and information technology projects, and three, related documents and actions. At this time, we have our CFO, Wallace Tang, coming up and he will be able to walk us through that item with his presentation. Mr. Tang.
You know what? Why don't we postpone this until Josh can arrive and do all the finance stuff at once, since Josh expressed a special interest in that? If that would be okay, yeah. Oh, thank you. So we need to return to this item. Anything else on your agenda? Okay, thank you very much. We'll return to this item. All right. Sonia, report for the audit committee.
Thank you, Chair. This is Sonia Dylan, the chair of the audit committee. First, I am thrilled and would like to thank and welcome Tristi Melanie Shelby to the audit committee. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Thank you, Sonia. Let's move on to the business agenda. I am 701, report on Office of Chief Trial Counsel workload studies.
Good morning. There's a PowerPoint that should be popping up any moment now. It's fairly well-known that I can't really speak without a PowerPoint. It's been a while, but it's still the case.
There we go.
Terrific. Hi, terrific. So I'm here to discuss item 701, the report on the workload study for the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. The, the presentation is going to give a quick conceptual overview of workload evaluation generally. I'm going to talk then about the direction to evaluate workload in the Office of Chief Counsel Council. Provide a little bit of background on the 2018 workload study and then talk about the 2021 workload study. I want to also note that Ron B., if he hasn't been promoted already, where we don't have much visibility into these things, but Ron B. is also on the agenda item. It is actually the intellectual author of the the important stuff in the workload study, the detail of the methodology. So Ron will be available to answer questions if any of those questions related to the methodology come up. The conceptual issues that I wanted to review in terms of the workload evaluation is, is to start with really the fundamental question for all workload evaluation, which appears at first glance to be fairly straightforward. And it's simply the question of how many resources are needed. The problem with this question, though, is that it can't really be answered until you answer some prior questions. The first of the prior questions that you really need to answer is, resources to do what? Oftentimes, it sounds like the kind of annoying question that a researcher asks you once you, when you've asked a researcher something and they answer your question with a question. But in fact, it's critical to get a resource need, in order to get a resource need, you need to know what you're attempting to achieve with the resources you're trying to estimate a need for. And this question leads to further questions such as, how is the work organized? What kind of technology is used when you do the work? What types of skills are needed? And then really the critical question, what level of service do you aspire to? I'm sure many of you read in a recent article in the media, a comment from a former assistant chief in OCTC who commented that the work in OCTC is often referred to as, hey, we build Chevys, not Cadillacs. That fundamentally gets to a question of resources. It's about aligning the resources with what you have, or rather, the work and the quality of the work and the level of service that you aspire to, to the resources that you have available. And in resource evaluation, what you're attempting to do is the opposite. You're attempting to, these are the resources we have, but what are the resources that we need? So what you end up with in a resource evaluation, a workload study of this type, is you have a research question that can't really be answered until you have answered a policy question. And I wanted to provide this at the outset as background because some of you might have noticed in reading the agenda item that it's mostly a methodological piece. It describes in some detail how we arrived at some estimates of how the resources in the office at some estimates of how the resources in the office of chief trial counsel are organized, where you can find different allocations of attorney time, investigator time, support staff time. But at the end of the day, it, it arrives with a policy recommendation. And the reason for that is simply what I'm laying out here, which is that we can't answer the final question of the resource, the workload study, until we've answered this prior question about resources to do what, and that's what the policy recommendation is about. Aligning, coming up with and agreeing on what our our policy goal is. So in terms of the methodology, resource evaluation, workload evaluation really needs to begin by documenting current resources, how many resources you have in sort of as-is model and how those resources are assigned. And then you need to leverage that data to the policy goal to estimate what should be. Looking quickly at the direction to evaluate OCTC workload, we actually received direction when the twenty seventeen strategic plan was put in place. Strategic plan goal two directed us to develop and implement transparent and accurate reporting and tracking of the health and efficacy of the discipline system. That included an updated workload study for OCTC and the identification of staffing and resource needs based on the results of that study, we conducted that study and completed it in twenty eighteen, I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a moment. But we now have further direction coming out of the California State Auditor's report on the state bar from April, in which the state auditor directed the state bar to develop and recommend an appropriate backlog goal, and then assess the staff needed to achieve that goal. The twenty eighteen workload study followed a fairly standard recipe of workload evaluation, we documented current resource utilization, and then we leveraged that data to estimate the number of additional positions that would be needed to meet backlog targets, and I italicize that to meet backlog targets, because that was the policy goal, that's what we had as our key objective, and that's what we were able to then take the data and make estimates as to what additional resource, what additional increment of resources would lead to what additional improvement in meeting backlog targets. The twenty eighteen workload study found that OCTC needed fifty-eight additional positions. Those findings were then used to advocate for a fee increase in twenty nineteen. I've done workload studies with the judicial branch when I was at the administrative office of the courts, and they can often be quite contentious, certainly in the judicial branch they were, because they often involve reallocation of resources. So it was, I was really pleased when, on the whole, the California State Auditor accepted the findings and said, yes, we agree that the office of chief trial counsel needs fifty-eight additional positions. It's unfortunate that they then said that we needed to add those incrementally, and the legislature agreed with that that recommendation to only provide nineteen more staff initially, and then to reassess, but on the whole, the findings of the workload study were accepted by the California State Auditor. The other audit that was conducted in twenty nineteen of the state bar to assess our need for a fee increase, but this audit by the legislative analyst office challenged the methodology a bit. It critiqued the single case weight that you, we use for all case types, I'll talk a little bit more about that when I talk about the twenty twenty-one workload study and the way that we build out differentiated case weights. It also critiqued the method that we use to move from an as-is to a should-be model. The different ways of getting at this, we used a more quantitative method in the twenty eighteen workload study, what we're going to be pointing toward in finalizing the twenty twenty-one workload study is a more qualitative method. So for the twenty twenty-one workload study, case processing really remains the key driver of resource need in OCTC. When you're building a model to estimate resource needs, you need some input that says, this is the thing that creates our work in order to then estimate, well, how many resources did it take to do that thing? And the thing that we point to in OCTC is cases, cases that are closed in a given year. So the need for differentiated case weights that the legislative analyst pointed to is case processing, distinguishing among different case types. And right at the outset, we needed to identify what were the different case types that have sufficiently different characteristics and that are filed in sufficiently high volume, that we could break those out as unique drivers of OCTC workload. We are preparing, as I mentioned, to adjust the case weights using a method preferred by the LAO, I mentioned that this is a qualitative process, it involves having focus groups with staff and talking with the staff about where they think they have adequate time, and where they could use more time, how much time they could use, what that time would be used for, and then building those increments into the workload model to say, well, if we were to do this, if we were to say spend more time evaluating bank records, or if we had more time to study the relationship between the the respondent and his or her client, then we would be able to achieve a higher quality of case processing, we would be protecting the public better, that's the type of qualitative adjustment that you would make. You would build a time increment into it, and then you would multiply the time increment out by the number of cases that you think you have coming in. And still, we need to know the goal that we're seeking to achieve here, we want to improve the quality of case processing, but we need some quantitative goals, which is what we're pointing to toward the end of this report. So now, a couple of tables that are pulled from the report. These were the different case types that we think are viable for creating separate case weights. Ron B., our principal analyst in office research and institutional accountability, organized these data, took a look at the different case types, and then came up with these case types, the original matters, NAUPL, reportable action bank matters, criminal conviction matters, violations, these are violations of probation's and also violations of terms of approvals. And then a catch-all category of cases that are filed in numbers too small, really to break out as individual case types and other category there. This then became the foundation for how we collected our data in a time study. So when you're collecting data on your staff and your resource allocation as current currently performed, what you see is that you're able to then take that time and organize it by these case types. We also collected additional data related to the allocation of resources by position classification. You can look at specific tasks involved in case processing and evaluate how long specific tasks are taking and how much time is devoted to these specific tasks involved in case processing. And then we also, we laid the foundation for the more qualitative work by including a sufficiency of time survey, with a survey of staff indicating, here's a range of different tasks you perform in your job, which of these you have adequate time to, you have sufficient time to perform adequately, how often do you have adequate time? Going back and forth between adequacy and sufficiency, I apologize. How often do you have sufficient time to perform these tasks adequately? So the sufficiency of time survey is going to be used to then guide our conversations with staff when we conduct focus groups. One of the first things that we saw after we had collected the data on time that staff spend in these different case types, and looked at it compared to the volume of cases that are filed, is when you look at the proportionality of resource allocation understood as the staff who are spending time in these areas, and you compare it to the proportion of cases that are closed each year, what you can start to see is that you get very different ratios of staff to cases. And I want to highlight this just real quickly, because this is really the foundation for the differentiated case weights that the legislative analyst wanted to see, if all of these numbers show that, well, you know, we get roughly the same proportion of staff assigned to cases as the proportion of cases that come in, then there wouldn't be much difference in terms of how cases are currently processed, at least not in a quantitative sense, in terms of like how many resources are currently devoted to case processing. But if you look at, say, the original matters here, where it looks like, you know, this is our, this is the number one driver of workload, the vast majority of cases that come in are original matters, the vast majority of the resources allocated for case processing are allocated to processing original matters. And you can see that it's almost one-to-one, point nine-six at the staff to case ratio there. But if you look then at another case type, or the reportable action bank matters, you have a much higher proportion of cases closed to the proportion of staff resource that allocated there, and what this gives you is a sort of relative sense of the resources allocated to these different case types, and what you're seeing is that on a per-case basis, the reportable action bank matters are about a third, they require about a third of the time that the original matters require. If you compare that to then, say, the violations, very different also, where the violations appear to require about three times as much resources in the current case processing model, on a per-case basis, the violations require about three times as much resources to process as an original matter. These, the same numbers, these ratios can simply be, be converted out to the hours that it takes to process cases, if you take these resources assigned, we've got them presented here in terms of the number of staff, but each staff has a certain number of minutes or hours available in any given year, and you multiply those out by the amount of time available in a given year, this is what you get, and this is also in the report. The final column here shows the estimated number of hours that it takes to process your average original matter case, average report of watching bank case. You'll note that these ratios, then they're not displayed here as ratios, but the relationship remains the same in terms of about an original matter taking about three times as many resources to process as a report of black and bank matter. You got twenty-five hours for the average original matter. You got about eight hours for the report of action bank matter. Violations that we noted before, about three times as many resources required per violation as required for the original matters, same sort of relationship here, but now just displayed in terms of the number of hours that it takes staff to process these cases. I wanted to point to this table, though, because what you're seeing here is also where we can begin to get into some of the detail and where these become valuable, there's sort of a a spin-off benefit of these types of analyses, in addition to simply advocating for more resources. You can also sort of see the internal allocation of resources. And you can see here, for example, that on the original matters, is the amount of time required by attorneys, investigators, and support staff, it's all, it's fairly similar. They're all spending about seven, eight hours per case for original matters. If you compare that to, say, conviction, criminal conviction cases, it's a completely different allocation of resources, there's originally no investigator time needed for processing processing of criminal conviction matters. There's a ton of support staff time required for processing these cases. And then there's a decent amount of attorney time required on processing the cases as well. So it becomes, in addition to an advocacy tool, it becomes something of an internal management tool as well, that helps you sort of understand where your resources are needed and how the different types of cases attack into those resources. The final piece of, of the current study and what is going to help us to move into the next phase of work on this is the surveys that I mentioned previously, asking staff about whether they had sufficient time to do their work. These bar charts represent the percentage of staff who indicated that they either often or always have sufficient time to perform their work adequately in these areas of case processing, these are the findings for attorneys and investigators. You'll note that the area where staff found that they had sufficient time to adequately perform their work least often was in file administration, primarily in using Odyssey, that's the bottom bar there, where less than forty percent of the responses indicated that staff felt they had adequate time. And you can see these other areas, these will become conversation pieces with staff in focus groups where we'll get into even more fine-grained detail about what that means and what the implications are for protecting the public and for processing cases, and making sure that we're not missing anything when we process cases. These are the findings for support staff, they had a slightly different set of tasks that they were responding to, reflecting the different work that they perform. I thought one of the interesting things here to my mind was that it appears to me, based on these answers, that the attorneys, investigators feel a little more stressed out than support staff, you find sixty-three percent of support staff on average, indicating that they have sufficient time to process cases, whereas for the attorneys and the investigators, it was only forty-five percent on the average. So instead of simply stopping with the opinions of staff with regard to whether they had enough time, we also wanted to try to tie this back to some empirical indicators of sufficiency of time, and Ron ran a couple of a couple of correlation models, some scatter plots, and also ran a regression model, this is just the, the correlation and the scatter plot looking at average monthly caseload of investigators, and comparing that against the investigative ratings on whether they had sufficient time to perform the work adequately, so taking those findings that we saw in the previous bar charts and saying, okay, well, how does, how does your assessment of your sufficiency of time compare to your average monthly caseload? And it shows a negative correlation here, so some empirical support for the opinions of the investigator saying, you know, not only do you feel you don't have adequate time, but the higher your caseload, the more likely you are to indicate that you don't have adequate time, so this is a useful sort of empirical, piece of empirical support for the survey findings. And then the final piece that we included in the report in terms of matching up indicators that will help us, help leverage these data and move these into a, an estimate of what we actually need is looking at the average caseload, and once again, the investigator caseload, this time a rate on the horizontal axis, but comparing the investigator caseload with the average days, how long a case is in inventory of the investigator, and you'll see a positive correlation and even stronger relationship here, where the higher the caseloads of the investigators, the longer it takes to get those cases out of inventory. So as I mentioned at the outset, this is a somewhat odd report in that it's a long methodological piece followed by a policy recommendation, so having finished the methodological section of my presentation, I'm going to now move to the policy recommendation, which brings us back to really the direction from the California State Auditor is that we need to develop and recommend an appropriate backlog goal, and then assess the staff needed to achieve that goal, we've assessed the staff that we have, and we're in a position to move forward with making the estimate of staff to do what, how many resources to do what, but we're looking for a a trustee, the trustees to approve our effort to replace the hundred-and-eighty-day backlog target with a different set of goals that we will then attempt to peg our resources to. And those goals are here, we've spent some time working with the office of chief trial counsel to determine whether these are feasible, I want to say just a couple of things about whether we think these are feasible. We think these are feasible if we have the right selection of cases here. Not all cases are feasible within these timeframes, nor do, nor should they be, criminal conviction matters in particular come on to our radar, and they sit for a long time before cases finalized. So we are in conversations to make sure that we have the right case mix included when we say these are our targets, non-attorney unauthorized practice of law cases similarly, these are not cases that lend themselves to these types of disposition goals. Vice Chair Duran, were you going to say something?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So that last statement, the, on the criminal conviction cases, I, I'm not sure that what I just heard matches what I saw on, on the numbers, because you said that cases come in and sit for a long time. I agree that it appears the cases are there for a long time, but I'm not sure they, maybe sit is not the right characterization, because there were a lot of hours spent on those types of cases, and I'd like to get to that at a certain point, but I just want to double check that I've heard correctly and, and not misinterpreting what I read.
No, it's, it's a great question, I would always defer with office to office of chief trial counsel on these issues in terms of these details of case processing, but I, in terms of what I've heard about criminal conviction monitoring cases, is that it's the monitoring piece that involved, and I think consistent with what you saw in the time estimates, is that the support staff are required to check back with some regularity on like the finality of a case, where does this case stand at any given moment, so if you look at the criminal conviction cases in this, this really high number for support staff, I would hazard a guess that it has to do with your support staff needing to check, you're checking back with the court to find out where is this case, is this case reaching finality?
Checking the docket essentially.
Looking for some more nodding over there, but.
I don't mean to, to.
Anytime someone's interested in the methodology, I'm pleased to indulge that.
Sure, yes, our paralegal staff, we have a handful of paralegal staff that have caseloads, and that is exactly what they're doing. They're looking for the actual conviction and then the finality of the conviction, because once the case is final, this can actually be transmitted to the review department, so it does take some time. Uh, once the case is final, this can actually be transmitted to the review department. So it does take some time to get there.
Can I ask a follow up question to that? This is Highland Chen. Um, in coming up with the proposed goals, did you take into account the significant increase in the number of cases that are criminal conviction related? There was in a previous slide. For twenty, for the last year, a significant increase, which I assume is a result of the fingerprinting mandate. Is that right? I mean.
And that's exactly what it's a result of. Um, and we took it into account insofar as we're measuring what is. The, um, you know, it's the column there with criminal conviction matters and that big jump in twenty twenty. So the benefit of that is that we're tracking the resources that are currently being utilized for criminal conviction monitoring. It will inflate probably the. The number in future years because that's going to, that's going to decline, but it, this is also one of the benefits of the, I mean. Did decline. We don't expect ever to have a sort of windfall of criminal conviction cases like that again. But. This is also the benefit of the differential to case weights is that if you were to run the model. Going forward and you had a smaller number in that column, you're going to be multiplying out the time estimates by a smaller number. And so therefore you won't be overestimating. The resources needed when you have a smaller number in that column.
Okay. And does the handling of this, I mean, it seems like it's a sort of dramatic increase that we think is a one time. Deal like it's not going to keep, like you said, keep going like that. Is the handling of those cases? Different or unusual in any way because it is. But in some cases, these are very old. Um, or is there, you know, do they take the same amount of time as in the previous years or is there something different about them?
I would say. Exactly what you said, because of the age of some of these cases, it's taking a considerable amount of time. You know, it's, it's very hard in some of these instances to try and get all of the documents that we need if they. This still, um, and that, uh, in conjunction with the sheer volume of them, uh, is taking quite a bit of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's the, uh, that's exactly the chart. I like that. What I like about, what I like about this, um, case processing goals. You know, dividing up cases by, um, you know, having different standards for. Different types of cases. And I like the fifty percent by three months, seventy five by seven, ninety by twelve and a hundred. Percent by twenty four months. That, that, that kind of makes sense to me. And especially because you're saying, you know, we're, we're going to get fifty percent of the cases done in half the time. Okay. And. My, 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 my question here is, um. Why in the seventy five percent did you use seven months instead of six months? Because the proportionality and everything else is kind of like. You know, it would be three, six, twelve, twenty four. There's a proportionality of timing and the seven is. I, i- is it because? There's no other way to get the seventy five percent or I'm just saying it's a little bit, the seven is an odd number out when you look at just the.
Based on a, an analysis of what we think we're currently able to do.
Okay.
So we looked at case processing under current conditions and we looked at how long it's taking to get the cases processed. And it worked out to closer to seven months.
Okay. Thank you.
It was, uh, if there are no further questions, I just wanted to make my final qualifications with regard to this. Um, these case processes.
Just mentioned this. So just to be sure I understand. So. This set of metrics is designed to be achievable with our current level of resources. Is that right?
That's correct.
So that if we were to say, get the twenty nine additional positions. Whatever the exact number is that the auditor recommended a couple of years ago, we could improve these.
We could either prove those or we could say, you know what? We wanted to devote more time to doing some other thing within case processing. We wanted to take more time with, um, reportable action bank matters. We wanted to devote. People to client trust, accounting evaluation.
That's an important point. Yes. And more complicated cases. Yes. Thank you.
Um, and so in terms of those qualifications, what I wanted to just point out is that, that I think three things really. So one is that. This is not about all case types because some case types don't really fit this profile. Um, and so we've been speaking with Donna and talking with Donna and making sure that in her conversations with the legislature that we're clear, clear about which case type we think. Fit into these, these goals that we want to achieve. The, the other issue with regard to these, we just flew out of my head. Has to, well, let me talk about the one that didn't. The hundred percent is probably never going to be achieved. There's no hundred percent standard that you're ever going to match. It's, there will always be cases that fall outside of that. So we just want to make sure. That, uh, and this was a late addition to the report where I said that these are feasible. Except, and so, um, somebody pointed out to me, oh, so you're saying they're feasible, except they're not feasible. And there's some truth to that. So we need to be clear also with the legislature that a hundred percent. Sure. You always want to aspire to a hundred percent, but we're probably never going to always hit a hundred percent. And then the item that I'm apologize flew out of my head that just finally returned. Was that when we did this analysis, we were looking at this in different ways. We were looking at this in terms of all cases. Uh, all cases with some exclusions for only those cases that we think that the profile. Uh, only active cases. Are we looking at active cases? Are we looking at active cases and suspended cases? And then I think the most important qualification that I think we really need to make sure we get. Written into the statute is that we really want to look at this by attorney. Ideally, this should be the oldest case on a given attorney. That is being counted rather than counting all of the cases against the attorney. So we're doing some final analysis right now. To confirm that all of our numbers line up and that they meet this. So those were the qualifications I wanted to make. Need to count by attorney. Need to make sure we have the right mix of cases in there. And need to be clear also that a hundred percent is. I don't think anybody meets a hundred percent on these types of goals ever. So. Please.
Just want to clarify when you say, uh, the right mix of cases.
Sorry. Um, so my question is. Clarify, when you say the right mix of cases, are we talking about slam down? Cases. I know this is, these numbers are based on empirical data, like you analyze a. A set of data, um, but are what does are the right mix of cases? I guess, I mean, it could be as complex as an attorney. One attorney who has like five hundred complaints against him as opposed to like one run of the mill.
So it doesn't refer so much to case complexity as it refers to the, um, the cases that OCTC. A rough way of thinking about it is the cases that OCTC can file with state bar court. That's one of the issues that's involved here. So for example, the non-attorney unauthorized practice of law cases. These are a case type that. State bar doesn't really have authority over, can't file in state bar court. So we've long sort of struggled with the backlog standard, the hundred and eighty day standard where you're supposed to either close a case or file. A notice of disciplinary charges with state bar court within a hundred and eighty days. That's a case type that doesn't fit that profile. There is no filing, uh, notice of disciplinary charge to state bar court because it, that's not where that case goes. Um, on the criminal conviction matters, those cases could ultimately be charged, but they would go to the review department. The, the case processing trajectory is different from other cases. And then there's also this issue of them being filed. And OCTC can't do anything with them. They can't do a thing with them until the charges are final on the cases they become aware of. And so holding ourselves to time standard on criminal conviction matters. Where we can't do anything on the case would, would guarantee that we failed to meet those targets.
Chair, trustee Dillon has her hand up.
Sonia.
Thank you. And this is not really on processing, but on, I just wanted to know for public interest. I understand that when there is a, a complaint against an attorney, it doesn't get into their profile. What is the percentage of these cases? That, uh, would, at what point will there be? Any indication in the profile of the attorneys that there are some, uh, complaints? Uh, are these all the, the number of attorneys? At what point would there be any? Indication that there are, there are complaints against an attorney?
An indication to the public.
Yes.
That's when the filing of a notice of disciplinary charges is made.
All right then. So it's not all the way to when it is closed, but, but at some point. People will know that there were some complaints against an attorney.
Although I should qualify that, and I think you might've been about to qualify this. It won't go up on the attorney's web, uh, you know, profile on the website. When a file, a notice of disciplinary charges are filed, except in certain circumstances.
Well, actually I just, so there isn't any notice to the public about the complaints themselves. It becomes public at the time that there is a notice of disciplinary charges filed. So. If a case results in closure without the filing of a notice of disciplinary charges, there is no public notice.
But Melanie, there are also consumer alerts that get posted on attorney profiles. That may notice the public under circumstances different from an NDC being filed. Maybe you can just describe.
Well, some, but it's, they're generally associated with. A filing of notice of disciplinary charges or imminent filing. So for example. If we have filed a petition under business imperfections code six double O seven C, which. Um, is a way for us to, um, more expeditiously request that the court. Um, render someone inactive while we are pursuing disciplinary charges. There would be a consumer alert for that. There would also be a consumer alert, for example, if a. Attorney is indicted for a felony. Um, but not yet convicted. There is a consumer alert for that, but just the fact of a complaint. Um, if in most instances, if the complaint is closed and there's no actual pursuit of disciplinary charges, that is not going to be, um, noticed to the public. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Well, I wanted to ask Dag, um, if we. If we wanted to undertake revising the fifty eight, that number fifty eight, how would we do that? Because this is a different methodology. We're proposing a standard that essentially we can meet with our existing resources. So i- is there a way to, thanks. Is there a way to use this methodology to also modify? Our previous, a previous one?
Well, I, I think that would involve looking back at the, so the method that Ron used previously. Involved looking at the relationship between how many staff you have and how long it took to process cases. And identifying, you know, what the, what the change is over time and looking at historic data. And looking at the differences in when you have more staff. Closing cases more quickly. And so focusing on that backlog target. So, uh, I mean, we could. It would involve refocusing on the backlog target, but it's also inconsistent with what the legislative analysts wanted us to do in terms of like a, a methodological approach. That LEO didn't like that.
I think my concern is that, um, I, I appreciate this approach and I want us to move forward with it. But I do want to make sure that when the question is called as to how many resources we think we need, that we're able to answer that. So, uh, maybe it's not revising the fifty eight. It's just a future exercise that we'll need to undertake.
Right. And I think so where we started focusing on this was on the caseloads, the caseloads of investigators and, and looking at. What lowering the caseloads of investigated would imply. For overall resource needs. So if you. Pegged the average caseload of an investigator at forty and said, this is what we should, this is, this is an appropriate caseload for an investigator. Then you would be in a position to say, well, given the number of investigators we have, we can't do that. We would need X additional number of investigators. In order to get to that caseload. And then it's a matter. Of saying, well, what is, what do we, what does a caseload of forty get you? Well, a caseload of forty gets you additional time spent on these things. And maybe it also gets you something quantitative in terms of saying. An additional investigator also reduces the amount of time that we expect these cases to take in, in this phase of case processing. It would be those types of things.
Melanie.
Thank you. And you may have answered this and I missed it. So I apologize if this is a duplicative question, but these, um. The goals were developed in partnership with our legislative partners. Or are you all making a recommendation to the legislative partners and then they're going to. The legislature and then they're going to provide some, some insight. I'm just trying to figure out where we are in the process. Um, of, of talking with the legislature's legislative staff.
It's more of the latter, Melanie, although my understanding is many conversations have taken place. Primarily led by Donna. There is an understanding and an expectation that we will be submitting. Uh, this proposal, I think the proposal has been vetted in concept. Um, I think that's accurate to say I'm looking at Donna. Uh, but they are waiting on a detailed, uh, proposal from us. And that is going to be provided subsequent to the board's decision today. So I think it's more the latter. I wouldn't say we developed it in partnership with them. Uh, but certainly after many years of identifying the current backlog standard as problematic, I think there is, uh. I think this was actually assisted by the recent audit. There is some, uh, openness to revising the standard. Preliminary discussions have been had about this particular approach and now we will submit a formal proposal.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because I'm just curious if, um, this proposal is not accepted. Then what is the, then playing the devil's advocate as I always do. Um, then what would be the, the counter proposal that we would be offering and just being prepared for that, right? Because you never really get everything you ask for.
Right. Well, I think at a minimum, there is, um, a statutory opening currently potentially for bringing back a complex case designation. This was pointed out in the audit. Um, the complex case designation allows a twelve month timeframe for case processing versus the six month timeframe. And I personally, without having talked to my team, but on the fly answering you, I think at a minimum. We would want to, uh, effectuate the necessary statutory cleanup. To ensure that we could take advantage of the complex case designation. That would be for starters. Uh, I don't think that would be too difficult to do. So that would give us more breathing room for those cases that the office of the chief trial counsel did identify as complex. I don't know, Donna, if you want to jump in with other ideas if they reject this proposal. And it's likely that they're not going to accept it as we submitted. It will be sort of a back and forth and a partnership to finalize it.
So I would just suggest to give staff a little bit of leeway to negotiate with the legislature, um, on, on a proposal like this. But we obviously anticipate a back and forth with them. I'm not sure it behooves us to lay out a fallback plan. Right now, um, and let's, I think we should have the conversation with the legislature. Figure out, um, any concerns that they have, see how we might be able to address them. And as long as we've got that, that flexibility. Um, as Dag was talking about, uh, with you before, and it came up with. Question, I think it was Sonia's question. What we laid out there were the, uh, the time standards that we think we can meet. Uh, generally with the existing staff resources. I can certainly see the legislature saying, we want to have more ambitious goals, more, more aggressive goals. Um, we're not opposed to that in any way. That would be obviously the, the way that we believe at this time that we could meet those goals. Are with additional staff resources. So there might be that kind of discussion. That happens with the legislature. We just want to leave the flexibility for staff to. Negotiate sort of around the, the concepts here that we've laid out in this proposal.
Does that answer your question, Melanie? Just sort of.
It does. I guess my, um, my concern. You know, there are goals that you identify solely on your own, right? Um, and I understand that the direction that the audit has provided, but then there are often. Negotiations that transpire when you come with some basic principles. And so I'm just trying to, you know, this issue in terms of backlog and cases is something that is, is, uh. Is of heightened interest. And so if there's an opportunity. And so if there's an opportunity to move the conversation forward with some, with some agreed upon principles, I'm confident you all have had that discussion, but I was just curious to see if this, how, how this goal was established, right? Because sometimes you can establish goals privately and everyone has signed off and then you're able to just kind of move forward and get to the work, so.
If I could just remind everybody, this, the, the principles behind this document were actually submitted as part of our response to the audit. You may recall that there were blanks in there for the, what percentage of cases and in what timeline, but we had set forth the principles and we had had that initial conversation with the legislature even before we included it in the audit response. Again, just sort of wanting to get some, to have some conceptual discussions about, about the principles. We received positive feedback, no commitments certainly, after preliminary conversations, but positive sort of feedback about the general direction that the principles were taking. So, you know, these numbers will certainly be something that we'll be talking about. And there, you know, we're not holding them to, you know, any, any commitment or anything that happened as a result of preliminary conversations, but we think we're heading in a good direction.
I was going to add to that simply the, the fact that we developed these targets based on the way that the superior courts are required under standards of judicial administration to report out their case disposition. So we looked at the way that unlimited civil cases are laid out in standard judicial administration in terms of the case processing goals, and they have time standards that are very similar to those. And in fact, the goals that we're proposing for ourselves are slightly more, they're slightly more rapid in terms of when we expect the percentage of cases to be disposed. Another thing that we, we shared this with the legislative staff when we met with them, but we also, they asked us to look at the Department of Consumer Affairs and various licensing boards under Department of Consumer Affairs and how they hold, what the standards are that they hold themselves to. And these standards are much less stringent than what we're held to. They're held to standards within different phases of case processing times, but the standards are simply averages. So they're, they're supposed to process, you know, the average case is supposed to leave intake within their intake unit within, say, 10 days. Well, that average allows you a lot of room on the other side of the average to like have cases that are much older than 10 days when they leave intake. So we brought that information back to legislative staff when we met with them for a follow-up meeting related to what we're proposing.
Okay, Ruben has been patiently waiting. Your turn.
Let me just start by saying I certainly appreciate the, the amount of effort and analytics that have been put into the presentation today and clearly the under, the ongoing effort with working with the legislative staff. I'm encouraged by the fact that we're even having this conversation and I think it's a positive move away from something that has really sort of been hindering us for a long time, this, this concept of a very set in stone backlog. And I believe that the amount of work and effort that we're putting into this, and I hope that it is a clear indication to our legislative partners and, and the legal community and the public that we serve, that, you know, we're trying to, to shift and adjust in, in an effort to, to better do the job that we're trying to, you know, that we're supposed to do. So all of that is just to say thank you. And I think we, maybe we should continue, we should continue on the path that we're on. And were you done with your presentation? I didn't even know. Okay.
I am. All right, further, we have a proposed resolution, so let's go ahead and put that on the screen. And then discussion remains open and also if anyone would like to make a motion, that would be welcome.
So is there a move of the motion?
This is Christine, a second.
Motion by Jose, second by Christine. Thank you. It occurs to me, oh yeah, based on the, Donna's well-taken point that staff needs some discretion, should we tweak this? Because it disauthorizes you literally to just seek adoption of exactly what's in front of us, so.
Well, it does, it directs us to work with the legislature to modify and modernize based on these standards.
I think the understanding of the board is clear, so I don't think we need to wordsmith it. I just wanted to point that out. Your hands are not tied. All right, any further discussion? If not, Sarah, let's proceed to the role.
I think I do, actually, I do want to know, thanks, Sarah, that this resolution that you see on the screen is slightly revised from what is in the agenda item and they made those revisions subsequent to a conversation with trustee Tony. They are, I apologize for that not being in red line, but they are very modest changes. I'm not sure if we can maybe postpone the vote on this, so staff could redline it to put on the screen. I apologize for that, Sarah, just let me know when I forgot.
Okay. We.
Let's go to the next item.
Go to the next item.
Maybe give them some time.
Let me make a note. I see the, and the change that you made addresses the comment I made, so that's now moved. All right, item 702, implementation of, implementation of changes to address disparities in the discipline system.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lisa Chavez. I'm the Director of the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability. And I'm here today with Professor Christopher Robertson, who is the Neil Pike Scholar, Professor of School of Law at Boston University. He's here with us this morning to give you all an update on the work he's been doing in 2001 to about some of the potential reforms that address racial disparities in discipline. And one of those reforms pertained to modifying the guidance of the state bar gives regarding client trust accounting. And at some point during the presentation, Randy Deventuram, the Director of the Office of Professional Competence, will join Professor Robertson briefly to describe the changes that OBC seeks to make to that guidance. So before we get started with Professor Robertson's recommendation, I just want to, on a personal note, say that I'm confident that those of you who are meeting Professor Robertson at the first, for the first time, will be joining the fan club we have here at the state bar. Because Dag thinks he's the president of the fan club, but I thought I should be the president because I was in academia for a long time and I really have come to appreciate the rigor that Professor Robertson brings to this work in such an applied manner. And in addition, he's just a really lovely person to work with and partner on this important work. So with that, I want, let's welcome Professor Robertson. He has a powerpoint presentation, so let's get that up and going.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Is there a quick, or also, it's so nice to be here. Nice to actually put on a jacket and come visit. This is hopefully coinciding with a trip to Utah where I'm hiking to the highest point next week. So hopefully I make it back from that to do the next phase of this work. So I'll be talking a bit about the work that really goes back. Well, first, let me just say, you know, these slides are just for our, to prime conversation and be sure I can answer your questions. Don't hesitate to interrupt me as we go. But this work goes back to November 2019. Many of you recall that Professor Farkas analyzed a humongous dataset with, with the assistance of bar staff and found a Forex difference in the rates of disbarment by race. Of course, disbarment happens rarely, but it found that black males in particularly had elevated risk of being disbarred and similarly facing probation or suspension. The, you know, the actual ratio is real different for each outcome, but, but the, the second key point that Dr. Farkas found was that that entire disparity could be explained by the things we observe in the data about the number and types of complaints that come in the door, whether those attorneys have representation going through the discipline process, et cetera. So it left a little bit of a dilemma for, for us reading that report in that it seemed like a very worrisome outcome, but it could all be explained by, by factors that were on their face, not racial. So that's when I was asked to come in in early 2020 and, and sort of read the report carefully, look at the data, do some legal research, talk to people in the, in the state bar and do some benchmarking with, with other state bars, both sort of desktop research, but also surveying and talking to others. And then suggesting maybe what we could do about some of those problems that Dr. Farkas identified. And so since then, when I reported to this board last July, one year ago, we've continued to evaluate some of the first wave of reforms, which, some of which are we talking about? We started exploring sort of a second wave of reforms from within that, that report last July and, and continued talking with folks within the state bar and stakeholders around the state bar and starting to think about, well, what's the next horizon look like? What can we do next? Because this is a big systematic problem that's not going to be solved by a single stroke of the pen. So in my original report, you'll recall I have three main focus areas that I was concerned about. In addition to attorney representation and reportable action bank matters, I presented on how the state bar uses the history of prior complaints that comes in the door with or without discipline. And so that work has proceeded, but it's really, I don't have an update for you on anything on that front today. So the, the point of this talk is to, is to update you in these two other areas of attorney representation and their portable actions. So to look at each of those briefly where we stand, again, here, here even within these, I had five different representations, suggestions, and we're going to focus on a subset of them today where we're sort of actively working. But it was really motivated by Dr. Farkas's observation that black males were less likely to have attorneys representing them when they went through the discipline process. And having representation by attorneys was associated with avoiding disbarment. And you can think about why that is. It's, it may not be fully causal and that it may be also that the people that are getting attorneys maybe have, have the best chances to win anyway. So it's, it's not really a causal claim, but it's the association that suggests the mechanism for the ultimate outcome. And so I suggested two groups of reforms. One to see if we could increase representation. You know, if anybody should be, understand the value of having attorneys, it would be this organization which regulates them. But then, you know, I'm not a pie in the sky optimist. We'll probably always have some people continuing to be unrepresented unless you go all the way to a public defender system. And so we need to make sure the outcomes for those that are still unrepresented are as fair and equitable and effective at identifying real discipline to serve your public protection mission. So, to sort of set up those, those moves towards getting more people represented, the first reform I suggested or put on the table was to begin tracking representation as a KPI, a key performance indicator, right? If you, the idea is that if we start measuring it year over year, we can monitor it and manage towards it as a goal. And the, and that has actually been completed. We are now, and just like, in fact, you know, just like the last agenda item, there, there's an important definitional issues, like what do you count at which stage, et cetera? And that's taken some time to, to iron those out, but we now have that indicator. And I'll show you some data in a moment. And the second one was that we should start actually telling attorneys when they're facing discipline that they should seriously consider getting representation because we have discovered that it's associated with better outcomes. And that, we began pilot testing that reform of notifying attorneys and that also required a lot of groundwork figuring out, well, how would we tell them? At what stage would we tell them? How could we make sure it's salient and true? And make sure it's actionable for them so they can do something about it? And I'll show you the, the draft we used there. So this is on that first item, the metric that's been created. This is from your agenda items. You saw this in your briefing materials. And you can see this is probably good news to be interpreted. But interestingly, it started way back the day I started serving. I can't claim any success, but right after I arrived here, more people started getting representation. So when, when you see a good thing, you should, you know, you should smile. There's enough bad news in the world. This is trending in the right direction. We don't know why it's trending in the right direction, that more attorneys are getting representation. And we also, from this data alone, cannot say if it's more black attorneys or black male attorneys getting representation. This is just a very first top line finding. But now that we have this metric, we can begin doing those analyses and cutting by race and by gender and by a different complaint types and things like that. And so this letter, the pilot rolled out in 2020, the fourth quarter. And interestingly, we rolled it out in a randomized pilot experiment. We've been sending it to half of one category of cases. We excluded some that aren't getting it, but within, within a category, we, we are randomly assigning some attorneys to receive this letter. It's, by the way, been a little bit controversial, like anything in the world you try to do. Some people have interpreted it different ways, but you can see it's a very direct. It's sort of, I pushed to try to make it as much as a clear motivational marketing sort of piece to get people towards the action that we desire. And I think if you squint, you can probably see the whole letter. But at the bottom of it, it has this link to, and this is one of the behavioral science principles. You want to give something, someone they can do right now, you know? Don't, don't just put it on the, you can actually take action and click that link. And that link leads to a bit.ly link, which then redirects to the California Association of Discipline, Defense Council, the group that specializes in representing people going through discipline. And we found about 140 clicks since we rolled this out to about, it's, we intended to reach about 850 attorneys going through discipline over this period. And so that click-through rate, if it's accurate, is about 17%, which is pretty high. If anyone's ever tried to do any marketing to get, you know, a target consumer or somebody to do something, 17% is pretty good, but it's a very soft number at this point because we would count the click even if they passed it to a friend and said, look at this ridiculous flyer, click the link. We would of course get that link as well. At the same time, other people might take the letter and be motivated to action to call their friend or someone they happen to know and not actually click the link. So it's both under and over-inclusive. But because this is a randomized pilot experiment, we'll be able to come back to you, perhaps at your next meeting, with some hard analyses of the, of the effect of getting this letter on getting represented and on case outcomes. And that's ultimately sort of the gold standard of giving you an actual randomized experiment. But I'm just, I'm just whetting your appetite for that at the future meeting. So those are those two potential reforms that we've made some progress on. And we're now doing that formal statistical analysis that I'm resisting the temptation to show you under the hood how that's turning out because it's not yet reliable enough to, to share out, but it's exciting. And then once we've done that, we will be in a position of deciding whether to roll out the letter to 100% of respondents, maybe with or without revisions. The other sort of goals I set out were more ambitious, not just to track what's happening and to encourage people to get representation, but actually change the economics. Because fundamentally, if people aren't getting representations, probably because they don't feel like they can afford it. And so we talked about creating a model of at least giving people one hour consultations for free, which the state I hailed from, Arizona, was, was actually doing. And so we've been in discussions about whether we can do that here. And for a long, for more substantial representation, you know, actually writing a letter or interfacing with bar staff or maybe even going to trial, can we get to a sliding scale fee representation? And so both those proposals are tagged as exploring. As you can imagine, the, the attorneys that do this sort of work are, are interested in helping out, but also of course sensitive to, to the need to, to, to make a living and, and charge fair prices to people that can afford them. And so we're in these ongoing discussions as several layers through the leadership of ADDC is, is, I've been talking with the press president and there's a new president as of winter. And the questions that are arising around, well, if we're going to do sliding scale representation, who defines the scale and how do we confirm who can afford what? And I was initially attracted to the idea of using the, the statutory fee scaling that you already have on the book for attorney's licensure fees. You have a mechanism for doing that. You have a bar, an office that receives those applications. But that would really just beg whether that's the right threshold. And right now, it's just a sort of binary threshold. We might want a more smooth scaling. The attorneys that work in this area are also concerned about liability insurance. There's, if, you know, it's, it's one thing to be giving away your services at a lower rate, but if you're still facing the risk of being sued for legal malpractice. And the last word I have there is just activation. I actually think there's only so much I can do to put this on the table and, and sketch out ideas that, that ultimately is going to take some engagement with the people that's sort of working in the trenches in this area. And someone needs to sort of decide to do it. So maybe I'll pause there for a second on the attorney representation phase and then we'll talk about reportable action. So maybe I'll pause there for a second on the attorney representation phase, and then we'll talk about reportable action bank matters.
I don't know, Ruben or Sean, there's just a lot of relation to the work of the Ad Hoc Commission in this area. And I just want to alert the board to that. And Professor Robertson, of course, has spent time with the Ad Hoc Commission. I don't know if you want to make any comments about that, Ruben.
Sure, I'm sure, only that I appreciate you being here, Professor Robertson. And I'm glad that the board gets a chance to, I think, take the high level takeaways from the work that you've done and the discussions that the Ad Hoc Commission through the subcommittees, fairness and effectiveness, have really been diving very deeply into. I think that's all still in process, and it seems to be in a forward motion process, which I think is good. And so I wouldn't add anything other than to say that there's a lot of work being done very deeply by couple, a few dozen people on these issues. And it's been good to have the voices of the ADDC and the State Bar Court and the other, the other players here, the OCTC in those conversations. So thank you for the the meat that you add to that sandwich.
Thanks. So on the second item of reportable action bank matters. You know, this was comes out of Dr. Farkas's report. And one of my first, you know, I was given the report and asked, help us figure out what to do about this report. And sure enough, you know, this was one of the key tables in the report that that got my attention. So a bunch of different ways to slice the data, but but this is one where they took the attorneys that had more than 10 complaints and looked at the types of complaints they tended to have divided by racial and ethnic groups. And if you look at the black versus white columns, I've done this for you once before and look down the rows. The one striking largest disparity is that row of RP actions bank. And you can see there that black male attorneys, this is just for males, you can see, are receiving these at almost twice the rate that white male attorneys are. And so if you want to figure out, you know, how to change the outcomes, you want to go upstream and change the inputs. And so this seems to be one of the big inputs. So what is a reportable action bank? You know, this is a statutory requirement that whenever there's insufficient funds on a client trust fund account, primarily IULTA accounts, a bank is required by statute to send in a notice of the same to the state bar. It, the statute doesn't say what the state bar has to do with these when they receive them, but they come in the door and several every day. And so, you know, if we go upstream, this is a picture, I mean, I have hiking on the mind of Elk River Trail here in California. If you go upstream and think about, well, so what's contributing to this process? How can we prevent some of these errors in the first place? And I suggested a whole suite of reforms in this area, but some of which I won't talk about today. But but one of them is, let's think about how people are having these trust fund errors. Especially the ones when you have a lower balance in the trust fund. If you have an error, it's more likely to trigger one of these reportable action banks. And as I read all the case law and rules and guidance about your trust fund obligations, you know, these are some of the most sacred duties we have as attorneys is to manage other people's wealth and to hold it in trust, quite literally. And, you know, when I looked at it and compared it to the other field I work in, which is health policy and healthcare and medical malpractice and medical error. The realization in that field has been that most errors are not due to a single professional making an unethical judgment. Most times, if people get hurt in a in a surgical suite, it's because of a system error. A group of people failed to maintain maintain things correctly. And so when I looked at some of the rules in this area, it suggested that they had too much of a focus on individual attorneys and not enough focus on error prevention systematically. And so we know there are other professionals like bookkeepers and accountants and there are other technologies like QuickBooks and trust accounting software that maybe we should be advising attorneys to use those and create a system for using those more affirmatively. And so I I picked out some sort of nit, I was sort of nitpicky about some of our trust handbook and things and and found little sentences here and there that pointed in the opposite direction, which and so one of my suggestions was maybe we can revise those. And so that's in progress. And Mr. Deifentoram's office has has brought forward some proposed changes that I think he can best speak to.
Thank you, Professor Robertson. Good morning, members of the board. Attached to the agenda item is actually the OPC Staff Memorandum to Professor Robertson responding to potential Form 1.3. It describes in detail, actually provides you the text of the changes to the Handbook on Client Trust Accounting that we've drafted and are prepared to implement. But I want to take a moment just to sort of look closely at this reform so that everybody is on the same page with what we're actually proposing to do. It states that we're to revise our guidance to encourage reasonable reliance on other professionals and technologies. And just taking a step back, what exactly are we giving guidance on? We are giving guidance on the attorney's duties with regard to their trust accounting obligations. Rule of Professional Conduct 1.15 requires all client funds to be held in a client trust account and imposes a duty to, quote, maintain complete records. Rule 115 also includes a provision, paragraph B, which, since the rules were revised back in 1989, has authorized the board to formulate and adopt standards for record keeping that are binding on all lawyers. The board adopted standards include requirements to maintain all bank statements, cancel checks, and to create and maintain ledgers and account journals, and to conduct monthly reconciliations. The importance of client trust accounting has long been recognized. In a 1952 California Supreme Court disciplinary case, the court said, "The purpose of keeping proper books of account, vouchers, receipts, and checks is to be prepared to make proof of honesty and fair dealing of attorneys when their actions are called into question, whether in litigation with their clients or in disciplinary proceedings. And it is a part of their duty which accompanies the relation of attorney and client. The failure to keep proper books is in itself a suspicious circumstance." And so once the board adopted the record keeping standards, following the operative date of the 1989 rules, closely on the heels of that, the State Bar published the Handbook of Client Trust Accounting for California Lawyers. And this book contains detailed discussions of a lawyer's trust accounting duties and provides sample forms for record keeping. The full text of the book is on the State Bar website as a PDF. It can be referenced anytime online or even downloaded. It averages about 8,000 to 10,000 hits each year. We used to sell the book as a soft cover publication, but we transitioned to making it available for free on the website many years ago. The handbook has long served as the primary reference source for information on record keeping duties and best practices. The book is used by the Ethics Hotline Staff in providing research assistance to lawyers and in ethics school and client trust academy school. By making the changes described in the memorandum to the handbook, we will be effectively changing the guidance provided to lawyers. Regarding the actual changes, after OPC Staff met with Professor Robertson, we did carefully review all of the texts of the handbook, and we proceeded to develop revisions that respond to the concern that the information presented in the book might be construed as discouraging a lawyer from using professional assistants or technology or applications in complying with the record keeping duties. And so we've added various new revisions and we've modified existing revisions. For example, one of the revisions tells lawyers outright that it is a, quote, prudent option for a lawyer to consider using a bookkeeper or other accounting professional who is properly supervised to handle all of the lawyer's record keeping obligations. We believe that the balance to be struck is between this concept of client trust accounting and the lawyer's responsibility for maintaining the integrity of the trust account as a, what the court describes as a non-delegable duty is supervision. And so if the use of technology and application or the reliance on a bookkeeper or a professional accountant is properly supervised, then we think that it's perfectly fine and very appropriate. OPC Staff understood Professor Robertson's point that many lawyers probably do lack the typical skill set that an accountant or bookkeeper has to be able to carry out their accounting responsibilities, particularly if you're a solo practitioner who is busily focused on rendering legal services to your clients. That said, this nexus between supervision as well as use of technology and other professionals is really the the new emphasis in the book. And there continues to be the unambiguous theme that lawyers who who do this, even with proper supervision, will not be absolving themselves of their responsibility to maintain the integrity of the trust account. And so in addition to those changes to the book itself, again, the book will change what the Ethics Hotline disseminates as research assistance to lawyers. It will change what happens in ethics school and the client trust academy school. We also have some more longer term initiatives that we're developing. We're looking at an ethics opinion or an MCLE self-study article that will address the use of professional assistance and technology. Publication of an ethics opinion would be different from information on the Ethics Hotline because it will actually give advice and analyze the factual setting, perhaps describing what supervision level is appropriate and what is not. The technology aspect is really timely because operative March 22 of this year, in response to recommendations from the Access Through Innovation Task Force, the State Bar proposed and some report approved an amendment to the Competence Rule 1.1 that states that the duties and competence requires lawyers to keep abreast of changes of law and its practice and the benefits and risks associated with relevant technology. So again, an ethics opinion or an MCLE article could go a long way in connecting the dots between the responsibilities of competence and use of technology specifically in the arena of client trust accounting.
Hi, Randy. Hey, this is Sean. Thank you so much for this presentation. We're running a little short on time, so.
Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions about what's been proposed. We're prepared to implement it if there's no concerns.
Yeah, I think the big, not to put words in your mouth, but I think the big picture is the proposed changes to the handbook. Based on my own knowledge of the law, are fully consistent with existing case authority. And the handbook was probably a little overly conservative and discouraging delegation that is permissible under the law as it stands now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we've got, is there any more presentation? I know we have a proposed resolution in the materials. Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So I also suggested that we should have a turnkey solution. A lot of this sort of handwork is subject to error. And it seems to me that in trust accounting, we are sort of still maybe in the dark ages compared to what we expect on our personal banking or business banking. So we're currently doing a survey with the Office of Access and Inclusion of the IULTA banks to understand what is the status quo. And then I might be able to have a better sense of what we can, what we can do better. There's this ongoing issue I flagged before about the role of the licensure agency versus the role of supporting attorneys. We can talk more about that. So so that's for those two focal areas. I do want to flag because I have been having these ongoing discussions with stakeholder groups who feel very passionate about these issues. And I don't want to lose sight of some of the larger issues that you may choose to keep on the agenda or bring back on the agenda. You know, some of the other reforms that are proposed originally around creating a discipline equity office within the state bar to to monitor these issues and keep moving the ball forward at a staff level, expunging some of these older records where there was no discipline imposed at all. Other issues in the Farkas Report, you know, I did 13 thing, you know, suggested 13 areas and got them fairly fleshed out. But I never meant to suggest that I reached rock bottom. Additional empirical level work, I think we need to be looking, for example, at the role of criminal convictions and in causing disparities and and whether maybe even some statutory changes would be helpful there because that's a huge area of racial disparity in America and California. And lastly, there's other pending issues that I think could be explored, including a study of the staff diversity of OCTC. And for example, a new issue that I've I've heard or a new issue that's come on my plate in the last six months has been about in the way that the fee structure of discipline really discourages attorneys from defending their own cases if they have limited means. Because if they go to trial or a second day of trial, it can be an overwhelming expense. So those are another way that these sort of disparities may be produced. But I don't want to take more of your time. I would have loved to have your emails and talk more.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a proposed resolution, so let's go ahead and put that on the screen. And then let's see if there's any further discussion or questions from trustees or a motion.
I'll be happy to move the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Brandon, second by Ruben. Any further discussion? Sarah, proceed with the role.
I have a question. So part of the working group, do we talk about prevention? For example, do we have workshops for graduating attorneys or when you complete the bar? Some sort of preventative resources for attorneys coming onboard to support this and and I guess skew away from the disciplinary disciplinary actions in the future?
So in addition to right at the point of bar of graduation or entering the field, there has been talk about, for example, requiring a trust fund accounting school before you open the first trust fund, right? Let's make sure you're competent before you do that particular thing because some attorneys never will have to do that. So that would be definitely an interesting idea that's worth exploring more, and I'll make a note of it. The other thought is, is one of my other recommendations is to create a more proactive, non-disciplinary system of reaching, of looking at complaints coming in the door in a completely separate office, not part of the disciplinary system. Be like, oh, these complaints are suggesting some trends. Let's reach out to that attorney and figure out what's going on and help them. It has nothing to do with discipline. That's another, you know, way to to target that education, target that help before it becomes a bigger issue of disappointment or disbarment.
Sonia.
Yes. And I think that there's a time for this, but I just want to put it on record, being a banker. I just want to find out the the accounts that if they are protected as in this this particular that counts that that attorneys maintain, do they have overdraft protection? Do there there are times when checks are being held and not available for use at a certain time? So I just want to make sure that the accounts themselves have protection as in, are they not able to maintain a minimum account such that they have to pay service fees every month? So I know it's not for this time, but I just want to make sure that we can also just talk about that and in the more practical sense as being, you know, coming from a banking institution that 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 the attorneys do have all these tools so that they will not always get insufficient funds when they are just there's a matter, there's a lag in amounts being available. And they, you know, overdraft overdraft protection or this particular trust account will not have service fees if they don't have the minimum, which is a high amount of minimum amount that's being maintained. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me suggest, Sonia. Those are all good questions. I think you might talk to staff offline, Randy or others could run you through all of that. And if you think it's something to be brought back to the board, by all means, we could consider agendizing it. Brandon and Brandon, you had your hand up, right?
Yes.
And then Mark.
So just to Juan's points about proactive steps that the bar takes. Some years ago, we instituted the 10-hour required MCLE for new lawyers who have just been admitted. There is a portion of that that's devoted to attorney trust accounts. And and that was really borne out of, we looked at specific areas where newer lawyers were running afoul of the of the rules of professional responsibility. And we wanted to take that proactive step to say, hey, you know, it's like the four levels of competence here unconsciously incompetent. We wanted to get that that information. So now you're on, now you're consciously accomplished. Like, hey, now I know what I don't know. So I think that is important work that the state bar has engaged, and I think there's certainly room for more work in that area. And self-assessment tools is something that back in 2018, we also really addressed. And there's a Board Item 703 addresses that further. So State Bar is definitely working on that, and I anticipate having more conversations with Professor Robertson about how those proactive steps can be implemented. And I anticipate having more conversations with Professor Robertson about how those proactive steps can be implemented and for the recommendations.
Okay, Mark Tony.
I really appreciate the presentation. I think this was an outstanding conversation that we've had. I'm Mike and I absolutely support the staff continuing to work on improvements to the discipline system in in the goals of advancing equity, particularly as it impacts discipline for blackmail attorneys. My my question is more of a procedural question, which is has the staff's authority to do this expired? And I'm trying to figure out is why, why do we need to vote on this? You know, it seems like something that the board has already authorized the the staff to do. And I'm just curious, like, does it, has that time expired or what's, you know?
I can answer that.
Okay, great.
So let's put the resolution back on the screen, please. So the answer to your question is no, the staff does not need a board resolution to revise this book. It's within their standing.
Yeah, okay.
So it's more informational and the the resolution is, it doesn't actually directly address the book. It's just sort of a general
Yeah.
statement to continue the work. I don't know. Leah, do you want to say anything about the form of the resolution?
Yeah, the resolution initially included board approval of the changes to the C T A handbook. I asked for that piece to be pulled because the board does not need to approve the C T A handbook. I think what you're catching then is therefore we're left with a resolution that also reflects something that the board doesn't actually need to do. So I think you you raise a good point. And it's fair. I, we don't need to have a board resolution to have us continue to do this work. I just didn't catch that part also.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could. This issue came up in some of our our bi weekly rad calls. And this was an issue that leadership had flagged, leadership around had flagged as being very important. We wanted to make sure that it was highlighted to the board that there was work being done in this particular area. So while it didn't technically require that, like Leah said, we wanted to flag it so people knew that we were working and taking this very seriously.
Okay. All right. So we do need to.
I'm happy to move the resolution.
Okay, it's actually already been on the table. Yeah, I forgot to, but Ruben. So we can either, the moving party can either withdraw the motion or we can proceed to a roll call because we should move on to our other item.
Okay, I know you want to move on. So I'm sorry, but I do want to say, because I think it's important that we are talking about client trust accounts in a lot of different places as a board. And I want to assure the board that as staff, we are going to bring it all together for you. I also want to make sure that you know that in the ad hoc commission on the discipline system, which you established, we are talking about many of these issues, including preventative education, including overdraft protection, including expungements and a whole host of issues. And so I do wonder, Chair, so like if we should give the board an explicit opportunity to identify issues that they want the ad hoc commission to consider because the processes need to be a bit more aligned. And maybe that can just happen by emailing me as, but I do want to.
That can happen. And then your point is well taken. I think maybe on the agenda for the next meeting, we should have an update on commissions work. We might choose to highlight some of the a few issues the commission is considering so that board members can give input, give their point of view. So I think that's a very good idea. All right. So does the maker of the motion wish to withdraw or not? I'm not pressuring you. I'm just asking you the questions. Honestly, I don't think we need a motion to be candid. I mean, a resolution. Okay, and who's the second?
That was me.
Okay, all right, the motion is withdrawn. So with great thanks to Professor Robertson and Lisa and Randy for your work. We really appreciate it. It's good stuff. So thank you.
It's been my honor working with everyone on the on the team. It's been a great process.
Very good. Thank you. All right, that completes item seven oh two. We'll return to item seven oh one. And staff can put the redlined resolution on the screen. And after the trustees have a moment to read it, I invite a motion.
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion by Ruben, second by Brandon. Any further discussion? Sarah, please take the role. Rotten?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Just now.
Hi.
Doug Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Duran?
Hi.
Anna?
Yes.
Protula? Shelby?
Hi.
Sol?
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, it's almost. Thank you, Sarah. It's almost exactly noon, so I think it's time for a break. Let's, let's make it short fifteen minutes. I can see lunches outside. We can come in and have a working lunch as we continue with our agenda items. So let's return at twelve fifteen. You get two extra minutes. Twelve fifteen. Um, so we'll turn now to item seven oh three. Proposed plan for preventative education for attorneys.
And that's me again. This particular proposal responds to a specific strategic plan and goal and objective. The strategic plan includes goal two, objective F, which contemplates that the state bar will create a fully articulated preventative education approach to include self assessment components as well as client trusted accounting modules, which may be mandatory for some attorneys. And so this is really a good segue from all of the comments that were just made. Brandon mentioned the new attorney training program and the board's consideration of the Colorado self assessment back at the planning meeting in two thousand eighteen. Leah mentioned that client trust accounting is being looked at on many fronts. And as determined by the action taken at the July twenty twenty board meeting on self assessments, that was picked as being the first self assessment module to be created. And professional competent staff is presently working with I P staff or talking to vendors to figure out how we're actually going to be designing and implementing that first course. What this item presents is really a strategic plan for the next five years of State Bar's self assessment modules and e learning. We've had success with our new attorney training program, the ten hour program of courses that is deployed through e learning for new admittees. We had an e learning course on the rules of professional conduct when they were revised in two thousand eighteen. And already in progress this year is an e learning course for addressing implicit bias and elimination of bias that will conform to the changes in the law for that type of education. Also, in progress and anticipated to be deployed this year is an e learning course for the probation department that would complement the requirement in probation that lawyers are required to read the rules. Instead of just reading the rules, they would be required to take an e learning course. But what is different about self assessments? Self assessments are sort of the the next step up from e learning. Self assessment program doesn't just give you education and test you on what you know. The self assessment module will also ask you, what are you doing? And so while an e learning course might test you on what you know about trust accounting, record keeping standards, a self assessment would sort of ask you to consider whether you're actually complying with what would be requirements as well as best practices. Do you, for example, notify the state bar when you open or close an I O D account? Do you have a an unproductive I O D account that's incurring fees, something that was also mentioned today? Self assessment results in prevention in really two ways as described in the memorandum. One, for the learner, self assessment is asking these probing questions so that the learner can identify for themselves any gaps that they have in what they're doing and can make changes when we consider the self assessment. Initiative initially, one of the things we looked at is some data from other jurisdictions where indicated that lawyers in general who take self assessments actually do change their behavior after having gone through that exercise. They change policies, they change practices, they focus more on their duties. And so there is a direct prevention for the person who takes the actual course. The other level, the next level of prevention that occurs with the self assessment courses is that we would be requesting, in addition to questions and answers about what they're doing, some profile information, which really isn't, you know, a function of our current e learning initiative, but would be advanced through the self assessments. By asking profile information from the takers of these courses, we would be able to run reports that attempt to investigate whether or not there are categories of lawyers, small firm lawyers, lawyers who are newly licensed, senior lawyers, whether there are some categories of lawyers who actually have particular types of issues with regard to either compliance or knowledge and information attention of best practices. And with that data, we are able to then develop new resources as well as new e learning and self assessment courses that would actually target that area of weakness and compliance. And so that would be an additional form of prevention because that could be made available on a voluntary basis. Or if the data demonstrates, it might even be something that could be made mandatory for certain categories of lawyers. And so the self assessment modules and the leaning courses really complement each other for the goal that the bar has with its strategic plan for preventative education. And it's not a new initiative. It is something that the the board has been looking at since two thousand eighteen that we finalized the format of it last year with the interactive format. We're not just putting out a fillable PDF or book. We're following the course content, the topics in the Colorado program. But in terms of our format, we're really more aligned with the Illinois self assessment program, which uses e learning media rich, interactive distance learning to really power the self assessment modules. And so the way the actual plan works, if you've looked at the attachments as well as the memo, you know that over the course of five years, there will be ten initial self assessment modules. These are planned as basic modules covering again similar topics as the Colorado program, but they would be diagnostic in nature. They would provide basic understanding of the substance, for example, conflicts of interest. In part because, one, we want to be able to incentivize lawyers to take the self assessments by offering credit. And there has to be learning and education in order to justify the granting of M C L E credit. It couldn't just be a survey. But more than that, the provision of substantive learning before you start asking lawyers what they're doing is so that the answers they give will be informed. And so if you ask the lawyer if they are implementing, for example, a conflict checking protocol, but they don't understand how the California rules on conflicts of interest works, then you have to question how reliable the self assessment answers are in the first instance. So the pairing of the education, the e learning part with the probing self assessment questions is designed to get that type of information. These ten initial courses would be pumped out at about a rate of two courses each year throughout the five years. And after the core, after the courses have been out there for about six months, we would pause, take a look at all of the data collected, and we try to see if there are any reasonable inferences. Want the prevention to be data driven. And so if if those courses that are initially issued result in data that says, well, we need a targeted course for senior lawyers on closing a law practice, or we need a targeted course on new lawyers on client trust accounting who are solos and who are actually handling the account themselves. Then within the five year plan, there is up to provision for up to eight more courses that are again formed by the data collected on the ten initial courses that would also be issued for members to take, but would be much more specific as to the teaching and as to the battery of questions asked so that we could compare the data between what was collected on the basic courses together with what the latter courses would also introduce. And during these
Yeah, I'm sorry.
five years. Go ahead. This is supposed to be more of a conversation. That's why we don't have a PowerPoint. But I wanted to make sure I laid this foundation. But why don't I stop now since I've described it and just entertain any questions?
Okay, that's a good summary. Donna, do you have anything to add?
No, I was actually just going to wrap up and sort of note that this is the the complete, the completion of the strategic plan goal to to present to you all a fully articulated preventative education approach. We did the one piece of it last year that we presented and got approved by the board. And we certainly don't need to go over the particular topics as you see in the resolution. The the plan would ask the board to approve the this plan conceptually. And that we would have ongoing discussions with the leadership of the Regulation and Discipline Committee on the top as more information evolves about what, whether there should be any changes to the the concept set forth in the agenda item. And with that, we will take any any questions.
Thank you. So before I throw it up, I do have a question, which is, I'm not totally sure I'm reading this right, but it seems with regard to two topics, client trust accounting and fees that I I'm not, it seems to be saying that we're not doing self assessments in those areas because lawyers might be reluctant to use them. I didn't understand that.
We are going after those with a two prompt approach because they are so important. Now, we do know from having spoken to last year, some of the jurisdictions that have self assessments that you need to offer anonymity because there is sort of a chilling effect when you are the disciplinary agency and you're asking lawyers to provide information about what they're doing. And so because we're going through the effort of developing the e learning aspect for both the initial client trusted accounting course, and then I think one of the third or fourth courses downstream in the plan is on fees, fee agreements, fee disputes, fee sharing among lawyers. We are also going to deploy those two topics, client trust accounting and the fees self assessment as standalone e learning, much like the e learning on the new rules course or the ten hour new attorney training. So that lawyers who might be reluctant or hesitant to do a self assessment would still have access to those topics. We want those topics out there for the widest population of of learners, of lawyers to be educated about client trust accounting and fees. And so they would be deployed both as a self assessment as well as as a a normal, so to speak, e learning course. So again, kind of double dipping with those, but it's because we want to reach a lot of lawyers.
There is self assessment in both those fields. Okay, and the anonymity is important. So that's good. Thank you. Comments, questions from trustees? Brandon.
So I I notice in the way that this agenda item would be implemented is transitioning of staff in in different areas. So I know that our staff is is working extremely hard to further the mission of the state bar. I just want to make sure that this isn't going to stretch or strain staff and detract from other important objectives.
So the agenda item notes that that this could, that there are a couple of options here. One is sort of rededication of a few existing staff resources or the addition of a small number, two to three staff resources in out years. And so that's why what we ask of you in the resolution is that you sort of make this a priority and direct us to account for the appropriate staffing when we prepare the two thousand twenty two budget and the ongoing budget. So if we determine that the best way to do that is new staff, and that was what will be included, will include the funding for that in in the budget. There will be some requests for existing staff, you know, as we're doing a client trust account module, asking some O C T C, a couple of people in O C T C to review the modules and add their expertise, but those should not be significant contributions at time.
So, Mr. Chair, then if I may, the constant theme that I see throughout our meetings on the Board of Trustees and then through the ad hoc commission, there's this idea of preventative measures that we can take. And I think that this is really an incredible culmination of a lot of work, a lot of hard work from since two thousand eighteen and before that really, you know, speaks to the bar's commitment on making sure that we're not just a gotcha agency, but we're actually out there making sure that our licensees are are protecting the public by being fully informed and having the best resources at their fingertips. So I'm happy to move this item and thank staff for all their work.
Thank you. Motion by Brandon. Can I have a second? Thank you. Second by Jose. Further discussion? During any, so uh let's put the res. We need to have the resolution on the screen, please. I should have done that before I invited the motion, but. I know Brandon has done his homework. Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the table. See, no further discussion. Sarah, please take the roll.
Rotten.
Yes.
Yes. This Narrows.
Bye.
Bella Cruz.
Yeah.
Dylan.
Yes.
Iran.
Yes.
Gonon.
Yes.
Bertula. Shelby.
Hi.
Joel.
Hi.
Hollings.
Yes.
Tony.
All right.
Motion, Chair.
Great. Thank you, Randy and Donna. We appreciate it. Good work. Okay, next is item seven oh four, approval of IOTA grant distribution for two thousand twenty-two.
Good afternoon. Louisa, can we also um promote Eric Iskin? He's a co-chair. Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone, members of the Board and members of the public. Uh, my name is Duan Hui, and I'm a program manager in the Office of Access and Inclusion. And I'll be co-presenting this agenda item with our co-chair, Eric Iskin. Eric, would you like to introduce yourself? You're you're on meet.
All right, let's try it again. Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm I'm Eric Iskin, and as Duan just mentioned, I'm a, I'm an attorney and I'm a co-chair of the of the commission. Duan's gonna take the lead with the PowerPoint and I'll be available. I may throw in some comments and then uh we'll be available for comments or questions.
Uh, so as you all know, annually, the Board of Trustees um sets them a distribution of Mathi Alter Grants. So this agenda item presents the recommendation from the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission for the two thousand twenty-two IOTA distribution for your approval. Um, and let me share my screen. I do have a short PowerPoint. Can you see my PowerPoint? Great. Um, and Erica and I would like to invite any questions along the way. I have limited visibility because I have the PowerPoint up. So Louisa or Justin, can you let me know if um any of the trustees or members of the public um have any questions? So here's a roadmap of what we plan to discuss today. Uh, we'll take you briefly through, give you some background regarding the IOTA statute. Um, also the revenue streams that that comprise IOTA grants. Um, we'll go over the reserve policy and then um we'll talk a little bit about how the commission and the staff came up with the two thousand twenty-one um projections for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-one year. And then we'll close out um with the Trust Fund Commission's um recommendation.
Juan, is there a way to make this full screen? It's not.
Oh, it's not full screen? Oh. Oh, um, okay, hold on. Sorry.
Maybe just the box at the top.
Okay. Okay, is this better? Is it full screen now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so we're going to give you a little bit of background about Ilsa statute. So the IOTA statute was enacted in the early eighties. Um, and as you've heard throughout the the day today, um with IOTA, uh, we, um, the the statute regulates attorneys and not clients. So attorneys are required by statute um to put into uh interest-bearing accounts, um client funds that are nominal or short terms. So the state bar has regulatory authority over the attorneys and not the banks. So we have a list of eligible financial institutions that are in compliance um with with um with with IOTA. And if there's a, if an attorney is banking with a financial institution that's not in compliance, then we notify the attorney. Um, that they need to move the the account um to another bank account. But we, we don't have a regulatory authority over the the banks. Um, with the banks, um, there's a negotiation kind of process that we we have with them and try to build the relationship. So that they are um issuing us uh interest rates are higher um than than what the state bar uh approaches prescribes. Um, the statute was last amended in two thousand and eight, and that's to enact the comparability rule. And pretty much the comparability rule says that um banks are required to provide us similarly um for similar um great products um for for these client trust accounts. Um, and if they're not able to to provide us with those comparable products, then the 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 bank can elect to pay um the established um compliance rate, the ECR rate. And that is determined by the Trust Fund Commission. There is a state bar rule that sets the ECR rate. Um, which is um sixty-eight percent, point sixty-eight percent of the federal funds rate or point sixty-eight um percent. Um, since the federal funds rate are quite low right now, um, the 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 current ECR rate is um point sixty-eight um percent. And just keep that in mind because we're going to go through um the numbers and our projections um in a few slides later, that 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 point sixty-eight percent. Um, even though it's quite low, um, it's 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 a good benchmark and that we're striving with our our leadership bank program. And as you all know, um, a few years ago, we did create the Leadership Bank Program. Um, and this is an elective program, um where banks volunteer to pay that that ECR rate of point sixty-eight percent on all their accounts as well as waive. Um, any fees and charges to the accounts. And as you all know, um, the the federal funds rate um dropped um pretty dramatically uh March of last year. So with our leadership baby program, we have been able to um to buffer that shortfall. Um, because there have been some of our top banks have elected to stay at that point sixty-eight percent rate um rather than dropping lower, um which which they they could. Okay. Um, so we just also wanted to point out that um the the interest on um by old accounts, they do comprise the bulk of IOTA grants. But there are other several other kind of I O, uh, revenue streams that go into to making um IOTA grants. Um, there's uh the licensing of opt-out forty dollars, um, that's in the the annual um uh licensing fee bill every year. Um, that that sets about sixty-six million dollars um on average. There's this justice gap donations, which includes the side prey um funds that we occasionally get. Um, that's a little bit harder to predict and they range from one to one point um five million dollars and because of the nature of side prey. Um, that that has fluctuated from year to year. Um, we also um get a small amount of tax intercept funds as well as um. Uh, unspent um uh funds from from grantees um that weren't able to spend their funds and that gets remitted back to to the state bar to be redistributed. And we also with our uh IOTA reserves, we do um invest that in an uh interest-bearing account. Obviously, with the interest rate so low, that does not net us um very much the last year or two. So this, this is um an overview of our um reserve policy that has evolved um since its inception in the early eighties. Um, the last time the reserve policy uh was revised was two thousand and six, and this is the current reserve policy that we have. And it provides for this four-step calculation um when we're in a rising income environment, which we are not. Um, when we are in a declining um income environment, the reserve policy um suggests that um the commission and the Board of Trustees should target. Uh, but for between thirty and seventy-five percent reserve based on um the revenue from the previous year. So when we're looking at um discussing the two thousand twenty-two um distribution, we would be looking at a target of um two thousand twenty-one revenue by end of year. Um, this chart um presents uh the federal funds rate, um the total IOTA revenue, IOTA grant distribution. And uh the year-end uh reserves from the last five years. Um, and we, and in your meeting materials, there's a a chart with more details that goes back um ten years plus. We just wanted to give you kind of a high level of what's happening the last five years and make some 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 notes, point out a few things for you. Um, so as you see, uh, in two thousand seventeen, um, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, that's when interest rates were were climbing. Um, you know, we had a recession in in uh two thousand and eight, and it it took about ten years for us to get back to kind of those levels where the Fed funds rate. Uh, was higher. And then, as you all know, um, last year, um, the federal funds rate um dropped to near zero. They still remain at near zero. Um, and I also revenue, um, they they lag a little bit behind the fluctuations in IOTA interest rates. Um, when interest rates go high, um, there's not a direct proportionized, should say, correlation between the federal fund rate and our IOTA interest rates. Um, sometimes uh because there's a little bit of a negotiation with the banks, um, they may lag in in raising their interest rates. The same is true when interest rates are going down, it doesn't automatically drop. Um, and that's where it gets a little bit tricky for us to do um projections because they can, banks can elect to go lower in in this kind of environment. They haven't. Um, and and so that that's where um the the projections get get a little bit tricky. Um, but as you see, they they do lag a little bit, um, and that's why um you'll see that even though um. We were at a uh, we were collecting um about up to fifty-five million in two thousand nineteen, we didn't distribute that until the following year. Um, Eric, is there uh anything else you want to note on this slide for the board?
No, well, I I would note that uh I think you're being modest, Juan, that the reason that interest rates have not correlated in the down environment as much as you might think is because of the. The great efforts that Duan has made and her staff have made to work with banks to keep that leadership bank program robust. And um, I think that's that's helped a lot in keeping the IOTA fund as as robust as it's been in this environment.
And then this slide, we just pointed, wanted to point out that this time last year, when we came to you to ask for um. The approval of the two thousand twenty-one distribution, we thought that we were going to close out two thousand twenty with about twenty-seven million dollars um for my IOTA revenue. We actually ended up closing out um two thousand twenty at thirty-six million dollars. So this, this is really remarkable um that we 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 closed out um close to ten million more than we thought. Um, given the the low interest rate environment. Um, so as Eric mentioned, um, this really is the great work. We have an entire IOTA compliance team um that tracks remittances, works with banks, and oh, we have about a hundred and seventy-four institutions that we're tracking to ensure compliance. So this is uh really uh has been a great uh effort between the staff and the commission um to 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 really work towards uh maintaining high IOTA rates. Um, but with that in mind, keep in mind that this thirty-six million dollars is still a significant shortfall from our high watermark um in two thousand nineteen of of fifty-five million. So we're still, we're still significantly less, but in a lot better position than we thought we were last year.
Uh, Duan, this is Sean. Thank you for this. So far, I would suggest you move uh to the reserves issue. I think that's the most important.
Okay, of course. Okay, so let me, let me just breeze through this uh really quickly because we did base our projections um on on January, April, um, actually, businesses of seven million dollars. And then the commission then took uh considered different scenarios um in in their projections. One, one was an aggressive, a moderate, and a conservative, and the commission chose to do a moderate projection in order to determine what our cash on hand would be for the remainder of the year. To then um provide you with a recommendation for next year. Um, and let me just walk you through the numbers really quick and then we can go to the the reserve issue. Um, so based on that moderate projection, um, the commission um is projecting for IOTA interest revenue about fifteen point seven million dollars. For the remainder of the two thousand twenty-one year. Um, our uh justice gap revenue, uh, we are projecting one point uh four million. Our legal services voluntary um donations, six point two, the interest income and tax intercept, five million dollars there. Which gets us to about um twenty, twenty-three point three million, and then then we backed out of our administrative costs, which are about two point one million. So the the ending of net assets um from last year um was uh twenty-five point eight million dollars. So we add the the ending that assets from last year to what we project our revenue is this year, which leaves us with um uh funds available of forty-seven million dollars. And the commission is 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 um uh wants to all again, take a a moderate approach in terms of their res- uh reserves. So they're proposing to keep the reserve at fifty percent of um the 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 current year's revenue. So that works out to be for the reserve ending in two thousand twenty-two, eleven point seven, leaving a distribution of um thirty-five point um of four eight there. And this is pretty significant, um, because the baseline, the two thousand twenty-one grant distribution was uh close to twenty-four million. So you'll see, even with this um fairly modest um conservative leaning, uh conservative, uh middle-of-the-road reserve. We're still able to increase grant distribution by forty percent. Um, so how about I pause there? Eric, if you want to add anything, if there are um board members that have any questions, Eric and I are happy to to answer.
Yeah, I would, I would just note that as Juan pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, the current reserve policy is somewhat broad. And it contemplates or suggests that reserves be set anywhere between thirty percent and seventy-five percent of um. Of of income, projected income for the prior year, which would be this year, and we landed right in the middle, fifty percent, which we think. We think is a is a prudent approach.
All right, thank you. Um, I have a question to start off. I guess I could probably do the math in my head, potentially, possibly, maybe not. So with the reserve of almost twelve million dollars that you're proposing, if the total income to the program was, is the same next year as this year, we would be able to pay out the same amount of grants? Or we'd be in a place to reduce grants?
For 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 the twenty, are you talking about now the two thousand twenty-three year?
Yes.
Yeah, that, so that, that's, that's an interesting question, and the commission is trying to ask us the same question, staff, to project out that far. There's a lot of volatility right now, and as you've seen, just with the turbulence of this past week with the stock market. We have tried to give um the commission to kind of projections out further than a year, and they haven't been accurate. So we we hesitate um to 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 project out that far, given, given all um the the various uh kind of factors. But we do think that we will likely be in a position of in in that, in that realm, we'll be able to distribute. Whether we can actually, that that's very hard for staff to make that projection now. Even in in a um rising income environment, uh would make it easier. Um, but the volatility of the market and given all all the factors with the vaccine and the pandemic, it's been very hard for us to. We do work with national consultants on this that advise all the other states. Um, the the this California is right now, and the uh our our bait remittances are a hot lot higher than the other states. But even with our kind of professional consultants, um, we've asked them to help us do that type of projection beyond a year or two, and they they have said it, it's very difficult.
Okay, I understand. I asked this, um, I was actually trying to get a slightly different question, which is not to actually project the revenue for, well, actually.
No, I think the answer to your question is.
Yeah.
There would have to be a reduction. Okay, I think what Sean is asking, if the revenue amount was exactly the same. Would we be able to uh allocate the same amount in two thousand twenty-three? And I think the answer is no, because you would eviscerate the reserve.
You would, you would, you would draw down the reserve. So if we assumed that the, you would, that you would pull in, it would remain flat. Um, this year, we're projecting that twenty-three um twenty, I'm just pulling on my calendar, twenty-three million-ish. Um, and then with the reserve about twelve, that would um bring us about thirty-five, so very close to it, but you would, you would draw down, you would draw down the reserve.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments or questions? All right, any more comments or questions? All right, then, do I hear a?
This is Jose. I'll move the resolution.
This is Christine. A second.
Motion by Jose, second by Christine. Sarah, please take the roll.
Rotten.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
This Narrows.
Bye.
Bella Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Gonon.
Yes.
Bertula. Shelby. Joel.
Hi.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Motion.
Thank you. Um, let's move to item seven and five, state bar metrics report, Lisa and Donna.
Thank you. Um, let's move to item seven and five, state bar metrics report, Lisa and Donna.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm here to present a some highlights from the state bar metrics report that is attached to this agenda item. Um, this report reports out on Q one twenty twenty one. And as well, uh for those metrics that are reported on a quarterly basis and metrics uh that have monthly uh quarterly requirements uh through the months of January through May. So as the report indicates, there are fifty seven metrics that we tracked for this report. Uh, they cover all areas, most functional areas of the bar. Um, we, of the fifty seven metrics that we tracked for this reporting period, forty three have targets for accountability purposes. And among those, forty seven percent met their targets. So in the report, uh, we include explanations for metrics that did not meet those targets, starting on page eighteen. Um, the the reason why we do this is because um, you know, we're we take as part of, you know, taking this project very seriously. We ask offices to reflect upon the metrics that did not meet their targets, uh give us an explanation for why they think they didn't. And most importantly, what their plans are to improve moving forward. There you go. Okay. So first, I mean, so what I'm going to do is, um, rather than talking about metrics at the individual office level, I'm going to summarize my remarks with regards to how the state bar is doing with regards to three broad areas. First has to do with um how the bar is doing with regards to internal customer service. Uh, what this means is those offices within the bar that are meant to serve staff within the bar, uh they have their own set of metrics, so we'll be talking about those. Next, we'll talk about how uh different offices are uh experiencing efficiency uh in their work. Then we have a set of metrics that we pertain to how we respond to our external customers. And then finally, we now we have a new category, which is fairness, and we have one metric that pertains to that. So starting first with the internal customer service, a big source of the data for these metrics are the annual staff engagement survey. Once a year, uh we administer a survey that asks staff how did try to understand to the extent to which staff is engaged at if with their work at the state bar. And that that survey also contains a set of questions that asks them for seven offices. Have you requested service from this office in the last two years? And if so, tell us to the what extent you wish you agree or strongly agree that they are knowledgeable, prompt, friendly, reliable, and professional. So we create composites that summarize the results of how people respond across all of these uh categories here. And then the target for these offices is to for ninety percent of people who said, I did request off request service. I was satisfied, I agree with those statements. Um, ninety percent will say that they did agree, and that's the target. Here are the results. The survey, by the way, was issued in April of this year. Um, and as you can see, of the seven offices that were surveyed, only one reached that target. And this is kind of, we've done this um these metrics two times in a row, two years in a row now, and this is kind of uh similar results year over year, general services gets really high marks at ninety one percent. Uh, but other offices have improved. So right now, three offices, human resources, recruitment and retention, and information technology, they've reached the eighty percent mark. And as you can see, uh other offices are down, uh approaching seventy percent and higher. So um in that report, you also see the explanations for why they think this is, again, this is an opportunity for offices to reflect on their internal uh service, and so many offices are reported how their offices and their ability to serve staff was impacted by the pandemic. Um, others talked about how they had to update processes, and they feel really good about moving forward. Um, other offices pointed out that a large share of staff had had the option of checking unsure about how they felt about the service they received, and so that impacted their results. And so my office will be trying to understand that a little bit more. And other offices, like I said, gave just gave um explanations about any staffing challenges they had. So all those explanations are are there for you to learn more about. So we have a couple of other metrics with regards to internal service, and this is a, this is a metric that is for recruitment and retention. Um, we have a new office of the recruitment and retention that started about a year ago. And their focus is just to really uh focus on exactly that recruitment and retention. This is something that was taken out of H R and given its own focus. And so this office in Q one, a three trainings for staff. Um, and what they do is for every training that they have, they issue a satisfaction survey. And their goal is that ninety percent, uh, they'll be ninety nine percent of staff will be satisfied, and they met that goal with nearly a hundred percent. Another measure of internal service has to do with how satisfied participants are with with our training and development program. This is a program we have at the bar that gives staff an opportunity to try out a different role for the purpose of professional development. And uh moving on and perhaps um moving on to a higher role within within their uh within the bar. And um ten members participated in the program and completed it in Q one, and all but but one indicated satisfaction with that program with their experience. I include this here, even though they didn't meet the target. Um, to me, it's a win because out of like nine people who said that they who who filled out the survey, all but one. Um, so when you have small numbers like that, it can really impact a result, and so that's why I include this here. So usually, they meet this metric handily. And on the right, this is a measure from the uh I T department, and ninety percent of stakeholders said that they were satisfied with new technology deployments that they experienced. Okay, so that has to do with internals, uh, the internal service metrics, and now I'm going to just talk a little bit more successes about efficiency. So uh just really quickly, on the left, this is our general services department. You know, they set a goal for processing eight, it's efficiency has to do how fast we take care of a business. And so different offices looked at their processes and identified the areas that they want to improve upon and set targets for completing things within a certain time period. So general services had a goal of that they're going to process eighty five percent of all facility requests. They received a hundred and seventy seven requests in Q one, and they met that goal. Go ahead and skip, I'm gonna try, I know that we want to uh move things quickly. This is an interesting metric um for us at the bar. It has to do with how quickly finance processes vendor invoices. And in Q one, they processed and paid twelve hundred invoices. The goal is to process them within thirty days of receipt of the bar. Uh, ninety percent of those will be processed within thirty days. As you can see, they barely missed that target by eighty three percent. Um, and they're looking at ways to improve, and just to keep in mind, this metric is really interesting because it belongs to finance, but it also takes into account um the clock starts ticking on this metric when the, when uh, when the state bar receives the invoice. So office leader like me, I will receive an invoice from Qualtrics to administrators or surveys, that's when the clock starts ticking. So then I have to then do what I need to do to send this over to finance so they can process it. And so in a way, we're all kind of responsible for this metric, but the reason why it was finance is ultimately responsible for it because they are responsible for creating the conditions for office leaders to get this work done expeditionally, so they have job aides, they have processes in place. Um, so there was, so they continue to work with improving, um reaching out to offices to note, tell us of the importance to process those invoices, and then on their end, they are deciding that rather than cutting checks once a week, they're going to move towards cutting checks twice a week. And so they confident that moving forward, they're going to meet this metric. Um, this is, so these are other two metrics with uh that have, again, goals on the left. I T wanted wants to complete ninety percent of their projects on schedule, on budget. As you can see, they've been included here as a success because they barely met it. Again, talking about small numbers, and so one didn't, one project was out of, you know, had scope creep, and it impacted the results. And here on the right, you know, this is a monthly metric for O G C. They want to complete on average sixty C R U cases, they want to close them per month. And as you can see, they met it for all months except for one month, and that was just had to do with some staffing changes in the month of May. And then here's an uh other metrics that belong to recruitment and retention again. Um, on the left, the goal is to reduce average time to hire in sixty days or less. Um, the only reason this metric um is sixty three days because one hire took over four hundred days. And it was a particularly difficult hire, given the specialties, the special requirements that were needed. Um, when we analyze the data for the rest of those thirty three hires that were conducted in Q one, um, it took fifty three days. And so in this, to me, this is a win. Um, it was just one one uh case that one hire that impacted this metric. And on the right, again, recruitment and retention, the whole purpose of with the way they try to uh promote retention is to conduct stay interviews within ninety days of hire. They ask a lot of question, how's it going, et cetera? And they usually meet this metric in Q one, they were unable to because two people weren't unable to schedule other interviews, and one was going to leave the bar anyway, so she wrapped, she he or she chose to do their exit interview instead. Let's just go ahead and skip this one, Donna, because uh we did these through ad, go ahead. Go ahead, one more time. Okay, so now let's talk about our our responsiveness to external customers. So who's an external customer? External customers are people who like fill out applications. Um, are people uh people who participate in the lawyer, uh lawyer assistance program, et cetera. So here on the left, this is a new metric for admissions. And what this metric does is they set a goal of complete processing of seventy five percent of applications for the provisional licensure program within two weeks of receiving that complete application. So for those of you, a little reminder, the provisional licensee program is a new program that offers twenty twenty law school graduates uh a limited license to practice law, and the program was expanded to include those who reach a certain score. And so again, the pro- the goal is to process seventy five percent of applications within two weeks. Admissions received four hundred and thirty eight applications in Q one twenty one, and their average process time was six days. So they met this metric easily. So on the left, uh, this is a metric for our attorney regulation and consumer resources. They set a goal, every quarter, they're going to fulfill ninety five percent of requests for certificates of standings within five days of receiving those requests, uh certificates or standings. And the most common certificate is, it's basically a single-page document that verifies attorney's names and bar numbers, and people need these for various reasons. A R C are fulfilled over twenty uh two thousand six hundred requests in Q one, and they met their goal of ninety five percent. And on the right, this has to do with A R C R's work with the call center. Uh, they actually used to have a target of a wait time of eight minutes. They lowered it to seven minutes for two thousand twenty one, but they barely missed it. Uh, but they had a really good reason for missing it because they received over forty thousand calls in Q one, nearly half were in January alone. That's typical. Um, but they were not able to beef up staffing with non-call staff. This because we were, everyone was working remotely, and the call system we have in place didn't allow for that kind of nimbleness. So they're feeling really good that, given the new system that was put in place, that should be find yourself working in a rerun re-riverment next January, they'll meet this metric. Okay, so this is an interesting metric because this has to do with the mandatory e-learning course that we talked about earlier. And the goal for the Office of Professional Competence is that seventy percent of participate, participants in this mandatory course will me, will report that they, that the course met their expectations. And so just as a reminder, this uh mandatory e-learning course is mandatory for attorneys who were admitted after February first, two thousand eighteen. It consists of ten hours of training, has to be conducted within the first year of attorney admissions. And there's four hours of legal ethics, three hours of basic skills, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so in Q one, over six hundred attorneys participated in the post-course satisfaction survey. And as you can see, seventy six percent said that the course met their expectations. Yeah, I can skip over this one. So we did this one around, okay? And here's a lot of one last metric with regards to fairness. Um, I presented this metric in Rad, but I'll present it here again. It's just, this is for the first time, we're starting to track attorney representation. And Professor Robertson also discussed this data as well. So this is a regular metric going forward, reporting on a quarterly basis. Okay, so finally, I'm just going to just talk briefly about the challenges we've identified. Um, go ahead and skip over this. These two metrics have to do with finance, and I went into a little bit more details with the finance committee with regard to these metrics, but I'll summarize them briefly. Uh, so on the left, this is a goal where um the goal for the finance offices with uh every time, every, you know, month, they're going to provide um budget analyses, et cetera, for office leaders, and they did not meet their goal uh this time around in Q one because they were having some problems with the financial system. However, the good news is that those Q one twenty one reports did go out, and we received them in June. They're really confident that that's not going to be a problem moving forward. And on the right, this is a new metric for finance that uh Wallace actually developed with uh new members of his team. Um, they were really, he's very anxious to put some metrics and hold his staff accountable, hold himself accountable. And so this is a new one. Their goal is to complete the closing of books within twenty days at the end of each month. And so he asked, uh, they they provided the data, looking at it retrospectively, and so as you can see, their goal is twenty days. Um, as you can see, their analysis shows that it's taking longer than twenty days, but you know, like I said, uh, Wallace is really excited about having this target for his staff moving forward. Okay, and then the last um one, oh, this is a tough one. Okay, so this was a new uh metric that's recently adjusted for H R. The goal is for staff to managers to conduct eighty percent of performance evaluations within an anniversary date. And it was adjusted before, um, it used to be like within thirty days of the date, and now it's like, okay, how about eighty percent by the date? And as you can see, um, this is a metric we report monthly, and two hundred and fifty performance evaluations were done over these five months. As you can see, um, with each month, it's just kind of all over the place, but uh not getting close to where we need to be. So I'm going to work with the H R department to maybe we can come up with some like alternatives to this metrics, like X percent within, by the date, X percent within thirty days, X percent within sixty days. So we can maybe set some targets to go for, to try to, maybe this was a little bit too aggressive. Um, I don't know, but this is something I'll definitely going to be working with the H R department on to learn more about. Okay, go ahead, Donna, last ones. So these metrics here have to do with um uh Office of Professional Competence. Again, they work with um our attorneys. And on the left, this is a metric about how satisfied people are when they call the ethics hotline. The goal is for eighty percent uh to say that they were satisfied, and this, and they usually meet this metric, but it they missed it, and it's down to sixty six percent. Um, what's really neat about the survey that we have is that it allows, it has these open-ended questions. So the O P C staff explored those open-ended questions, and they really, what's neat about it is that they really learned the problems that they had, we had with our own system that really cropped up uh in Q one. And so they're confident that moving forward, it should be fine um because they have a new system in place, and it really had to do with a lot with the um, but sorry, with this new system that became operative, June, June one. And on the right, this is a measure of a voluntary e-learning course that's available. This, the goal is for eighty five percent of people to be satisfied with that course. I didn't meet that target this time, and again, O P C analyzed the data from seven hundred and forty eight people who filled out the survey. And they learned that a lot of people were dissatisfied because they couldn't go through the course as quickly as they wanted. They had to kind of sit and wait for all the screens to finish. So um O P C learned more about it and found that A D A compliance standards require the narrative audio to read all the on-screen text before something can move on. And so O P C is going to discuss this issue with the e-learning vendor to see if there's options available. Okay, that's what I have for now. It was a lot, uh, but like I said, um. So, can I just take questions?
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good. All right, uh, item seven oh six is withdrawn, so we'll return to the two items we passed earlier, beginning with item fifty four dash one forty one. So Wallace, thank you for your patience. Come on up.
Josh made it just in the nick of time.
Very good.
Good afternoon, should uh should like and members of the board and members of the uh public. I'm glad to have the chance to um discuss and brief uh you about uh what was the financial performance during the first quarter in twenty twenty one from January to March. And FYI, uh, the charter of uh state bar finance committee uh directs the uh staff to uh to present this to the uh finance committee on a quarterly basis about the quarterly uh financial positions and the revenue and expense streams. And I did the presentation to the finance committee on July the first twenty twenty one. So in this uh report, uh, there are three components. Uh, one is the financial statement report, and one is the investment report, and then And one is the, um, um, investment report and then the crime service fund report. So in general, uh, on a annual basis that, uh, in terms of operating, uh, budget and financial positions. We have over two hundred million dollars on our annual budget. And all of that, about fifty percent of that belongs to general fund. And as you know, that general fund is the funding source to support, uh, uh, massive, uh, volume of transition operations. To support, uh, the state bars. And as of, uh, the end of, uh, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Our financial positions, uh, stayed, uh, pretty stable in the way that, uh, our total assets versus, uh, total liabilities. And we had the two, uh, three hundred and one million on the asset balance. And also the libraries are a hundred and twenty-four on one, uh, million. Uh, what is telling us that, uh, we have a, uh, uh, positive net positions, uh, on the, in the balance sheet. And then, uh, in the financial statements report, um, so besides the balance sheet, then we have the, uh, income statement. Income statement is telling you that, uh, what were the revenues versus expenses. And, uh, during this quarter, and, um, so we have. Uh, a pretty good and strong quarter. And, um, we have a, um, revenue stream over, uh, twenty-three point five percent over the budget. That means we have received, uh, more than what we budgeted for that, uh, for that quarter. But at the same time, on the expense side, uh, we spend more than what we budgeted as well. And for, for information that throughout a fiscal year and quarter to quarter. There may be something we call the timing of the transaction. So depending on the timing about maybe the contract executed, depending on the timing that the grant is received. Then the timing that, uh, we pay out the grant. And comparing twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um, there was a one-time event that really hit our, uh, financial position. Which was, um, the expansion of our, uh, retiree health plan. From, uh, executive staff only to also to cover, uh, non-executive staff.
Wallace, should we be advancing the slides here?
Okay. So, um, I want to finish off that, that one time event really hit, uh, the, um, the, uh, the financial positions. And, uh, so that turn of, uh, uh, OPAD, the other, uh, post-employment benefit, uh, balance. From, um, a, from a positive assets to a liability. And that's the reason, uh, why you will see, uh, there was a drop on the financial position. And for this lie is focused on more the revenue and the expense stream. And as I said, uh, it is a strong quarter and, uh, um, we, we, we saw the both the revenue expenses increase. And, um. This line telling you, uh, the breakdown of the operating, uh, uh, revenue. And the reason why we got, um, more than what we budgeted for this first quarter because of the timing of, uh, crime service contract. That was executed, that's supposed to be executed at the end of last fiscal year in December. And then that was delayed to early this year. And with that, our, um, uh, eco assets funds and, um, also the, uh, Iota fund. They, they come in, uh, in the, uh, this, uh, first quarter. And then on the expense side, and, uh, as I just mentioned, that the timing of the grant and the contract executed. So in this quarter, uh, we pay out significant amount on the eco SS fund. And also the ITO, uh, uh, grant program as well. So a few bullet points, um, about the highlights and I mentioned about the impact on the one-time. Um, we, uh, health, uh, health benefits for the, uh, retiree. And, um, I want to mention about the vacancy, uh, is another aspectus. And that, that, that gave us some savings, uh, providing some savings on the personnel spending as well. And especially during the pandemic, that, um. We have less staff to, uh, take vacations and staff keep accruing more and more as significantly as well. And, uh, so, uh, so we have vacancy saving, but at the same time during the pandemic. That, uh, our, uh, balance on the accrue vacation and significantly has been increasing as well. And also, um, last but not least, the timing of the grant money coming in and all that triggered the, uh, variance. And the last bullet point is the, uh, kind service, uh, fund settlement payments is under budgets. Because during the pandemic, that case has been processed, uh, at a slower pace. The second report in this, uh, Q one, uh, package is relating to the investment, uh, report. Um, basically, uh, the investment, uh, income has been dropping because of the interest rate has been dropping. And the local agency investment fund, uh, the quarterly interest rate has been dropped from, uh, one point eight nine percent. To zero point four three percent. And as of the end of the quarter. And, uh, the, uh, the daily rate on the, uh, uh, on the leaf was, uh, zero point, uh, thirty-six percent. So, um, that's the message that, uh, we are expecting to see, uh, the, um, the interest, uh, income. Is staying low and while we are still in the, uh, low, uh, interest rate environment. And then relating to the last piece, the, uh, CSF, uh, crime surface one. And, uh, as I just mentioned, that, uh, case being processed at a slower pace. And, uh, at the end of the quarter, our fund balance on this, uh, CSF fund was about nine point two million. Comparing to, uh, eleven point eight million. And with that, I would like, uh, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, trustees, comments or questions? Hearing none.
I do have one question. This is Hyland. Um, Wallace, really appreciate your presentation. I, I noticed, and apologies if you covered this, but the diff, the variance in the amount of, uh, AR stood out to me. And I wondered how, what is, what accounts for that variance? Do we think it's, uh, is there a plan for collecting it and do we think we're able to collect on it?
Yes, uh, entering into this fiscal year, uh, we are springening the collection efforts. So, uh, we started to, uh, to, to forward a lot of the agent account to the, uh, Fed. Uh, for, uh, for, for the, uh, franchise dashboard, uh, the state F T B. And they have a very effective of collection department. So, uh, for this fiscal year, and because it is the first time we do that. And initially, when we prepared the budget for this fiscal year, we were guessing that, uh, it will be good. You know, we can have F T B to help us collect about, uh, eight hundred thousand for the whole year. But as of today, and, uh, F T B has already successfully collected more than eight hundred thousand. So we are making, uh, progress on the collection. And, uh, we had, uh, presented the, uh, collection, uh, policies, uh, earlier, uh, this year in the, uh, board meeting as well. So we've done as a basis that, uh, we, we are heading into very good directions in terms of, uh, uh, collecting in a more effective manner. Thank you.
So, so, but what, so I, that sounds good to me. What accounts for the difference in the year-over-year comparison in AR? I mean, it's just so, it's so, such a much bigger number.
Right, uh, for example, I can tell you that, uh, as of the end of last fiscal year at, uh, December thirty-first. Our general fund, uh, reserve balance was about nineteen million. And, uh, our projection for this year, the general fund reserve will be dropping to, uh, seven point, uh, seventeen point five million. Which is about, um, a one point five million deficit. So what that means is if we have a more effective, uh, and timely, uh, collection on the agent account. And that will help out to, to relieve that, uh, annual deficits for this fiscal year.
So Hyland, um, were, were you referring to one of Wallace's slides or something in the?
In the financial statement in table one. We take a look at table one, accounts receivable through the first quarter for this year is twenty-eight million. Last year was three million. So I'm just trying to understand what accounts for this difference.
So Wallace, my understanding is that's the timing of the I O L T R, the legal services money, but what, yes.
That's exactly the timing of the I O D, uh, money. So, um. And this was same and it's on a cruel basis. So that is the cut off and, 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 and draw of the timeline.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Josh.
Oh, Josh. Uh, thanks, Sean. Wallace, thank you. This is really, really helpful to take a, a look. I had a couple of questions. I think the best way to ask them is probably to focus on table two, um, the budget to actual variance. Um, and just curious on a couple of them and we've had some conversations around them. The licensing fees are. A little bit higher than we expected. Um, I don't know if those are fees or donations and I'm just curious if we can talk about, um, why we think that is. I, I know we had some conversation around, um, COVID, um, obviously this touches on admissions. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, uh, if we know, uh, why they were up quite a bit.
Okay, maybe, uh, should we go back to table two?
Table two, I think is the best place to look at it, yeah.
I don't, I don't think we need to post. I don't think Luisa needs to post this table two in the report on the, on the, that's posted to the agenda.
That, that's fine. Um, it was also in a slide, but e- either way.
Yeah, so, um, so the, the, it, the increase of the actual, as I said, that is just, uh, the, the timing of, uh. Executing the judicial council agreement for the equal SS grant and also for the homeless prevention grant. And these two grants composed of like, almost like nineteen point six million and four point nine million. Supposed to be in, uh, the last quarter of December. But because of the timing, the delay of the execution of the contract and then this big chunk of money coming to, um, the first quarter.
So Wallace, I think, um, and I'm looking at table two in the report. I think, Josh, are you talking about the ninety-nine point three million versus the ninety-seven point two million? Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so he's not talking anymore about the, we're not on the, um, the Highland question. Now we're talking about the variance in licensing fees and donations, quarter one. Uh, budget versus actual or compared twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
And again, this is the timing, for example, the license fee. The license fees, uh, get billed to the active, uh, attorneys, uh, starting at December first and they have until February the first, uh, to pay. So it really depends on the timing that, uh, the, uh, of the payment.
Okay, ma- maybe I can do a better job. I, I, um, I understand that we know the timing when we, uh, we, and it's not that large of variance. It was more of a conversation that we've had around, um, figuring out our future revenue coming out of licensing fees. And if there was any effect, um, that COVID was gonna have on it. And, um, um, we, we understand that timing when we do the budget. So I'm not understanding why that would be the variance. I'm, I'm just curious if, if less people, um, left the profession than we expected. If more people came in, um, but you seem to think that the, the difference is just purely timing.
Yeah, I don't have any data on whether or not we have fewer overall licenses. Or if there are more folks that move to inactive status. I haven't taken a look at that. I can. But it just looks like there hasn't been, um, a neg, there wasn't a negative impact, at least so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, got two, two more quick questions. One is we, um, we spent less than we expected in chief trial counsel. And I'm, I'm, uh, obviously, um, just curious, uh, on, on how that is. It, it's, um, maybe not that significant, but over four quarters, it's gonna be pretty significant. Is that just a, an ability to hire people issue?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if the savings are coming from salary savings in the office's chief child counsel. I see Donna shaking her head. Um, so there have been a number of vacancies in that office and I, I think that's where that. That savings is coming from. A salary savings was already built into the budget. And so this is additional salary savings from additional vacancies, um, that we're actively recruiting for.
Okay, that's a, that, clearly that's a, uh, area we're always, uh, seeking more positions. So I was just trying to figure out if you're having a problem filling them or where the disconnect was. And then the last one you might have touched on, but I got a little lost on it. That, I'm sure it's just a one-time, the, obviously the largest differentials, the access and inclusion. Did, 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 did you touch on that and I just missed it?
You're talking about the.
Two hundred ninety-four point five percent variance?
Oh, the SS and, uh, inclusion?
Yes.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and, um, again, that is the, uh, the, uh, timing for the equal SS grant. Um, and, uh, coming in and al- also the homeless prevention grant.
Yeah, okay, ma- maybe I'm just confused. I, I, if, um, if, if that's just timing. So it should just wash then? The operating revenue difference in the, in the access inclusion expense are just washed?
Oh, trustee Josh, what that means is, uh, when that is a timing effect, that means, for example, you may have a, uh, draw a strong, uh, quarter, this quarter. That means we have a, uh, 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 understated quarter, uh, like in, uh, last quarter, uh, the last, uh, uh, last E N. Because that revenue is supposed to be coming in, in December, but now it puts to the first quarter.
So, so, yeah, so in layman's terms, there was a significant delay in the judicial council transferring the funds. Uh, that were, it, were given to them in the budget to us for distribution. And that had to do with an issue with their ability to, it was a sort of technological issue on their part. So there was a significant delay. We should have received the money earlier. We did ultimately receive it. So Josh, Josh, yes, it's a wash.
Okay, it's a net off of the one forty-three in the operating revenue. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, so it's like a wash of the last quarter of, uh, twenty twenty versus the first quarter of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any more questions or discussion? All right, thank you, Wallace. Um, the next item, our last item on the open session agenda is item one.
Chair, I'm sorry, do you need to take a vote? Cause this got pulled from consent.
Oh, cause we need to approve it. Thank you. Uh, let's put the resolution on the screen, please. Uh, and do I hear a motion?
Chair, move the resolution.
Thank you. A second. Motion by Jose, second by Juan. Sarah, please take the roll.
Broton.
Yes.
Jen, yes. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Grant.
Gonon.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Stowe.
Hi.
Darling.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, on to one forty-three. Approval of, uh, various matters, including refinancing of the loan on one eighty Howard Street. Jose, Leah has offered to present this unless you would like to take the lead. Okay.
Okay, and Wallace, I'm just doing this because we, I, I know we're really short on time and wanna move into, um, closed session. So this item seeks the board's approval, uh, for the state bar to enter into an agreement to both refinance an existing loan. And take out a new loan, um, on using one eighty Howard Street to secure this debt. With respect to refinancing of the existing loan, the terms are quite favorable. Uh, not only will our debt service reserve fund of about two point five million dollars be returned to the bar. I'm not really gonna use the slide. So wait, maybe, uh, keep it up there, Wallace, in case I wanna put, put one up. Um, two point five million will be returned to the bar, but the annual debt service payment on the refinanced amount will be lower. Than our current, uh, debt service payment. I think it goes from about one point two five, two million a year to about six hundred thousand on the refinanced amount. The more significant, um, portion of the, of the loan that's being sought is to fund capital projects, new projects. Um, primarily in San Francisco, but some in Los Angeles as well. So this is a, a good slide to have up. This slide, uh, is important because it does show, um, the variances between capital needs. That were originally identified by the state bar as part of the fee increase request that you've all heard about. That's there in the column. That's there in the column original total ask. Then you can see what was actually funded by the fee bill. Then you move over to the right column and you can further write total revised budget estimate. And you can see the variance between what was funded and what we estimate the current cost of these projects to be. So the first takeaway is our original total ask was not approved in the fee bill. You can just see that from the differences in those columns. Then you continue on further and you can see that even for those projects that were approved on the capital side in particular, there is now quite a significant variance in the cost. So you can see that, for example, if you look at, I can't read very well anymore. I think it's the generator project approved at one point three five million, but our current budget estimate for that project is four point nine million. So this, I think, is just important. It goes to Sean's point he made during his chair's remarks about the need to have the finance committee reinstitute, reinstate its review of the viability of our occupancy at Howard Street because the the costs significantly exceed what we were funded for. And so now you can see in the far right column, the twenty twenty one loan, what we are actually taking a loan out to fund. So you might ask, why are we doing this? Well, we believe that these investments are absolutely critical to our ability to continue in the building. These are really critical safety and maintenance items that have long been deferred. Importantly, even if the finance committee after its review determines that we cannot occupy one eighty Howard Street on a long-term basis and, for example, need to sell the building, these investments that we're asking the board to approve today, we will recoup that investment in, we believe, in our sale price because it's absolutely necessary that they be done. And that's why we're asking the board to approve taking out this debt. So I'll just pause there. This we've provided in the agenda item quite a bit of detail about the structure of the lease financing arrangement. I want to applaud staff and Jose, the finance committee, for coming up with such an innovative way to an affordable way to pay for these investments. And as you can see on the slide that's up, we do not have any prepayment penalty that will accrue to the bar if we do choose to sell the building. So Jose, yes, feel free to augment and Wallace, if I miss anything.
Yeah, thank you very much. Great explanation. I just want to add one other point that I think is really exciting about the the proposal here today. This loan, the when the capital expenditure costs were presented to the legislature for their consideration, and they came back with the approvals that they did, they spread out the the funding of that monies to the state bar over a number of years. Well, certainly you can't fix generators or elevators or whatever over eight years. You need to fix it all at once. And so the the logic of this loan is exactly like it would be for anybody facing capital projects, which is if the revenue is going to come in over the next eight or nine or ten years or whatever it is, we borrow the money today at fortunately great, really low favorable prices and interest rates and so on and terms, and then pay it back primarily with the funds that will be coming in through the fee bill as allocated by the legislature. So we all support this and believe it's a it's a good option and a strong improvement for the finances of the state bar.
Questions, discussion?
And if there's none, I'll move the resolution, Chair.
Thank you, Jose. Motion by Jose, second by Ruben. A long resolution.
I see. Okay. I too want to recognize this, the great work of the staff. They did a fantastic job in the negotiations, the planning and the execution of this with our outside partners and, of course, our financing bank.
We need to hire one of those fast-talking announcers to read this. Read all the disclaimers on ready lands. We have a motion in a second. So unless anyone wants more time to read the resolution, I think we can take the role.
Broton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Just narrow.
Bye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
I'm recusing.
Base.
Duran.
Yes.
Gonon.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Elby.
Hi.
Stowe.
Hi.
Dollings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. That will complete the agenda items on our open session. We will be, after a break, we will be returning to closed session pursuant to government code section one, 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 two, six subdivisions, A one, C two, and E one. So let's take we need to do a little bit more work on something we want to present to you in a closed session. So let's take a fifteen minute break and we'll plan to commence closed session at three o'clock, two fifty.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
We were coming back to item fifty one that was pulled from the consent item. Are we doing that later on today? Is that it?
Item fifty one.
Fifty dash one. I thought that was pulled from consent.
I I don't believe so.
Okay, maybe I saw that incorrectly.
On consent.
And regarding the contracts piece?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I'm confused.
All right.
May I also note for the trustees calling in remotely, we'll be sending out the conference line. It will be the same number that you dialed into yesterday. And I'm sending that out. The only thing that's preventing me right now is that I was sending it out with proposed language for a resolution, but it sounds like that proposed language is being modified.
Yeah.
So I'll send out the number without it and I'll send the resolution out separately.
All right. So in terms of timing for beginning the closed session, let's start at two o'clock. It's hard for me to see the analog clocks here because of the angle in the room. So we'll Leah thinks we can do it in ten minutes. So let's shoot for, let's shoot for one fifty. We'll try to start at one fifty. Notwithstanding recent events, I will now read the resolutions. The first resolution says, resolved that the Board of Trustees establishes a special committee of the board to be known as the Committee on Special Discipline Case Audit to further analyze the audit report on the closed discipline complaints against attorney Thomas Girardi and to develop a proposed corrective action plan to be approved by Rad or the board. The members of the special committee are as follows. Jose Sisneros will serve as chair. I, both I and the vice chair will serve. Ruben Duran is the vice chair will serve as a member of this committee, along with Mark Broton and Melanie Shelby. The second resolution is resolved that the Board of Trustees directs the Committee on Special Discipline Case Audit to work with staff to conduct a study and develop recommendations for increasing the state bar's ability to effectively and proactively regulate attorney client trust accounts and attorney client trust account management to include, for example, but not limited to, one, proactive random audits of attorney client trust accounts held by California licensed attorneys; two, requiring some or all attorneys to obtain audits of their trust accounts on a regular basis by a certified public accountant; three, requiring annual self-funded audits and reporting of client trust accounts; four, requiring the use of third-party escrow accounts for some or all attorneys; five, new and amended statutes, state bar rules, rules of professional conduct and other rules governing attorney conduct, as well as standards governing discipline for client trust account violations; six, bonding requirements; and seven, an assessment of technology and other tools that can be employed in this effort. Further resolved, in conducting the study, staff shall review, among other things, practices in other jurisdictions and other disciplines, previous studies in California and other jurisdictions, and information about the effectiveness or potential effectiveness in early detection of financial misconduct and deterrence of such misconduct. The study and recommendations shall be reviewed reviewed and approved by the Committee on Special Discipline Case Audit prior to coming to Rad or the board. Rad or the board will issue the final report on increasing the state bar's ability to effectively and proactively regulate attorney client trust accounts and approve recommendations for public comment no later than December thirty first, two thousand twenty one. And I am reminded that I made, I omitted to announce one member of the commission, and that is trustee Highland Chen. So with that, our meeting is adjourned, and I thank all the trustees and staff for their hard work today.